The live, that would be great, thanks.
Everyone in the room will be going live in ten seconds, so I'll do a countdown from ten to five. So that's ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Latrobe City Council, ordinary council meeting. Tonight, we have a hybrid meeting with the majority of our councillors in the room. We also have councillor Harriman joining us virtually. And we also have some speakers who'll be joining us tonight. Some are in the room with us and others will be joining us virtually as well. Please bear with us in relation to that. We do know that having that virtual environment in a hybrid situation, that there can be some delay. We will allow for that so that everyone gets a fair opportunity to be able to participate. Because there's a bit of lag, otherwise everyone in the room gets a bit of an opportunity to move a bit more quickly. And we don't want that to encumber anyone else's participation. I'm pleased to welcome councillor Dan Clancy, our deputy mayor, councillors Ferguson, councillor Gibson. As I mentioned, councillor Harriman's joining us virtually, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Lund and councillor Middlemiss. Also welcome our CEO, Steve Pascanti, who's here as our members of our exec team, our governance and IT crew, who make everything work on the cameras and all of those sorts of things. Councillors, I will just get us to stay in our chairs this evening as we work through the acknowledgements. I would like to acknowledge we are meeting here today on the traditional lands of the Braklung people of the Gunai Kurnai nation. I pay respects to the elders past and present and those elders emerging. I'd also like to acknowledge any elders who are joining us here this evening. As we move on to the prayer, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. They will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the kingdom, the power and the glory are yours now and forever. Amen. Just some housekeeping matters, and given that we're hybrid, some things relate to us being in a physical space again. And others are more the way we'll conduct ourselves in a virtual environment as well, as we have people joining us in that way. Just reminding everyone, just to be very aware that in the way we capture this, that your image and or voice may be contained within the live that we currently have streaming. And that live then stays within our collected documentation of tonight's event, so it will be there. Even those that are speaking to us whilst you won't necessarily appear in the video, as you're standing at the lectern if you're in the room with us tonight, your voice will be captured as part of that meeting requirement as well. As with all of the usual things, we conduct ourselves in a way that ensures that there's a level of fairness and opportunity, but also consideration for others in the room, but also those participating virtually. If there's any questions along the way, please let me know. We may have a few adjournments tonight, we may take some breaks as we wander through. Bear with me if we need to just take those. We'll aim as much as possible to get them between obvious breaks and reports so that that's easy. And if anyone needs a break at any point, produce a given indication, that would be wonderful. And we'll work that through. We don't have any apologies or leads of absence to record in relation to this, which moves us on to item four of the agenda, which is the declarations of interest. Councillor Gibson?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. The arbiter said there was a conflict of interest with ten point one, so I'm declaring a conflict of interest, please.
Okay, thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Ferguson?
As I mentioned in that, does that mean I have to declare that as well?
I don't believe so, but happy to take advice from the team if you would prefer.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Absolutely, through the CEO to you, to the governance team?
My understanding is no, that's not the case. For both those items at ten point one or ten point two, there's no need to declare a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's ever, if there's anything that comes up through the conversation, thank you councillor Harriman, I've noted you. Anything that comes up at any point, you can stop us, we can re-ask the questions again, just whatever we need to do, that's perfectly fine. But thanks for asking that question. Councillor Harriman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a conflict of interest general on item fifteen point one, appendix five, two items. The Lions Club application, obviously I sit on the board of the Treogan Lions Club. And the Gibson Carers Association application for grant, I sit on the board of Gibson Carers as well. So just like to note that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Harriman. Councillor Howe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I wish to declare a general interest on fifteen point one, the Latrobe City Community Grants and Sponsorship Programme Round Two, it's number five, Attachment E. My son sits on the committee for the Treogan West Cricket Club. They have one grant application in for a new cricket pitch cover. And they're also the auspicing body for the Latrobe Valley Allability Sports, who have an application in for specialised training equipment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Clancy?
And very similarly, on the same item, which is fifteen one, the community grants. I have a conflict of interest and I believe the officers have brought that out at item six, so that'll be separated out. So I'm not voting on that and I'll be voting on the other grant applications, but not on the item that relates to the Federation University Business Awards. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you very much councillor Clancy. Councillors, anything else on that one? Councillor Middlemiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a statement that I do not have a conflict of interest at item fourteen point three, which is the sand quarry. However, I would like to address a possible perception of bias in relation to this matter, a bias that I deny. As a councillor, I have been involved with the quarries in this complex for over twenty plus years. That is my role as a councillor. That goes back to the period when Wholesome, or that's how you pronounce it, was Ready Mix and even back into the days of Bob Simons, the late Bob Simons. Over these years, there've been a number of discussions of the operators up there expanding their markets into Melbourne. And a number of them put proposals to council, and as a ward councillor, I was consulted, about using rail transport. In fact, I'm still on a government rail freight transport committee where rail movement of sand from that deposit has still got a possibility one day of going ahead. So my involvement with that complex has been as a councillor. It has been related solely to rail transport of the product. It's certainly clear that I was aware that one day they would have to expand and they would need a permit from council to do that. But I understand my role as a councillor is to listen to all sides of an issue, to pay particular concern to the officers' report and then draw my own conclusions from that. But I think I needed to state that in case there is a perception of bias. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, and there certainly is some complexity around that, I appreciate you taking us through. Councillors, I'm also declaring an interest, no conflict, on item fourteen three, not dissimilar to councillor Middlemiss. This is a interest, and the nature of which has been disclosed to the CEO prior to the meeting and to my colleagues in relation to the briefing sessions as well. So we'll be staying in the room for that one. Councillors, any further in relation to the declarations of interest? Okay. Next, we'll move on to item five on the agenda, this is the adoption of the minutes, this is page four on tonight's agenda. Do I have a councillor? Councillor Gibson, thank you. Councillor Lund, was that second? Take it there's no opposition, it's procedural, but everyone seemed happy with them when we previously spoke. Good, not aware of any issues in relation to that, no councillors likely to speak, nothing further, we'll carry that one unanimously. Thank you very much, councillors. Move on to item six of the agenda, I'm aware some of you have provided some advice in relation to matters you would like to speak to. This is the acknowledgements, this is the section of the agenda that allows councillors to acknowledge or formally recognise or pay respect to achievements of individuals or groups or the passing of a person who is closely associated with the council or the community at a council meeting. I will just speak very briefly to one. I believe councillor Harriman wanted to speak to the matters of ANZAC Day services. I'll then come to councillor Harriman to make sure there's some fairness there and then we'll go around the room, councillors, to allow for that opportunity for anyone else. I wanted to speak to the significant loss that we experienced as an organisation, but many of us is friends with the recent death of Jodie Pickin. Jodie worked at Latrobe City Council for many years. She was then taking up a secondment with East Gips Lanshire Council and her contribution not only to the local government sector, but also the disability and community service sector more broadly was a significant one. Many of our community members to this day will be participating in activities that are in play because of the work that Jodie did. She was a significant leader in our organisation, she was someone who was focused very much on the benefits of the community. And I think, as I'd said to her family, even in the most recent weeks, she literally squeezed every last minute out of her life and the things that she did. And we were very lucky to have her, we miss her dearly, but we do see the contribution she has made reflected in just about everything that we do here at Latrobe City Council. We pass on our condolences to Jodie's family, friends and of course, her work colleagues across the local government sector. Thank you. Councillor Harriman, to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, can I add my condolences to what you've just gone through too? That Jodie was an outstanding member of staff and is will be severely missed. If I can, Madam Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge our RSLs and the turnout on ANZAC Day. As an eastward councillor, I'd like to thank the Treogan RSL for the time, the effort that they put in running the number of services they did at Toon Gabby, Glen Gary, Tyres and Treogan, as well as the Dawn Service. In particular, if I can thank the committee of the Treogan RSL for the work they've done leading up to this. Having to put up with a burglary the night before ANZAC Day and losing part of their sound system. Biggest belief, but they, again, in true ANZAC style, they just continued on. And can I also thank Colonel Doug Caulfield for the emceeing he did and for Sergeant Robert Timmers for the work he put in as well on the parade ground. Madam Mayor, on a more happier note, can I also congratulate Jade Melbourne, who was drafted to the Seattle Basketball, Women's National Basketball Association team in the last two weeks. It's now emerged that Jade, in a sign of extreme, extreme maturity for a young lady, has decided she will spend another year playing basketball in Australia just so that she can get up to the level she needs to, to go and play in the WNBL. So I'd just like to congratulate Jade, A, on being drafted by Seattle and B, by showing the maturity she has to stay in Australia and continue playing here and lift her game. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Councillors, any further acknowledgements? Councillor Clancy, and then we'll go to councillor Ferguson?
Oh, thanks, Madam Mayor, just to follow in councillor Harriman's acknowledgement of ANZAC Day services. And I was, had the opportunity to spend a bit of time with councillor Harriman on that day. And he's recognised the RSLs and the work that they did in the lead up, but also on the day and the way that they, they held themselves and conducted their ceremonies were exemplary. I wanted to take the opportunity, you know, to, I suppose, ride on that same wave and thank the community associations that were involved as well. I was at Toon Gabby in the morning and at six AM, I think I was there, was the township group, the Toon Gabby Township Group who ran that service in conjunction with the RSL. And then at Glen Gary, the Glen Gary Community Association in conjunction with the RSL and the Tyres and District Community Association in conjunction with the RSL. It was great to see the, the community associations working in association and the schools being involved. The, the young people come out and pay their respects. It, it's pivotal to have our community associations, township groups be involved in these processes. And it was, it was great to see so many people come out and pay their respects to the men and women who served our country. And it was, it was really, really good to see. So I wanted to acknowledge, just on the back of what councillor Harriman's already said, to recognise the, the groups that were in there as well. And councillor Harriman's acknowledgement was, was really good and I wanted to just add that. So thank you very much, very much councillor Harriman for mentioning it, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Clancy. Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just wanted to congratulate the Hazelwood Rotary on the Churchill ANZAC Day, that was very well done. And the Aero Club again with their flyover was pretty amazing. It's always a poignant moment when they go across, isn't it? And I wanted to also thank the Morewell City Band and also in Yanara, I wanted to thank the Yanaran District Community Association and also the Morewell sub-branch who helped organise the dawn ceremony and the general ceremony there. So that's all I've got to say, well done to everyone, it was really good.
Thanks very much councillor Ferguson. Councillors, any further acknowledgements? Councillor Gibson?
Can I just say to all the RSLs?
Yep.
Because we all went to all the different RSLs and, you know, from the, the dawn services to the breakfasts. You know, they do a wonderful, they make a wonderful effort. But if it wasn't for what they did in the first place, we wouldn't have it and we wouldn't be where we are now. So just an overarching.
Couldn't agree more councillor Gibson, could not agree more. Thank you all very much. Moving on to item seven eight, this is public participation, so speakers in questioned on notice. It's where we hear from speakers from the community. We do request that any speakers we have join us, keep their address brief and to the main issue of concern. We do limit speaking time to three minutes. Councillors, they may subsequently ask questions to clarify a point that you've made. Councillors won't however be able to respond to your questions directly and they won't be drawn into debate or commentary on anything in particular that you raise. So please don't feel like the councillors are being rude in that way, they just, that's not the nature of the way the engagement occurs. As we mentioned before, please be aware that everything is being broadcast. And in relation to any of these items, if there are questions arising or anything like that, we'll have the CEO take those as questions on notice so that he can follow up those in relation to anything that might come up as we move through. We do have six speakers that have registered to speak to us tonight on items in tonight's agenda. With the meeting being held both in person and virtually, we're going to go to our virtual attendees first. It's always a good way to do, just in case we lose anyone in terms of connection, we want to give them the best opportunity. That means we can get them back if we lose them at any point. We will welcome those speakers in from waiting rooms, from where they sit in, in those strange spaces that exist virtually. Then we'll come to our speakers in the room itself. We do have speakers tonight, councillors, just for your information, on ten one, ten two, twelve one, fourteen two and fourteen three, if anyone is... Okay. So this is why we tend to try and go to them first, but if we can't find them, we'll go room and then we'll go back to waiting room. Okay, so not at this point, I've skipped through. Okay, I'm, yep? Not at this point, okay, councillors, I'm just going to reshuffle that order. So speaking to us on item ten point one, now this is the internal arbitration process, is Julie Rowley, the CEO for Gippsland Employment Skills and Training. Julie, sorry, oh, councillor, just before you start, Julie, just allow councillor Gibson a bit of time. Sorry Julie, I just wanted to give councillor Gibson the time, please feel free.
This is my fear factor, being the first speaker.
No, look, don't, if it makes you feel any better, we haven't been back in a room like this for so long that I'm sure we all forgot where to sit, so I wouldn't be, do not be bothered by it at all. Be three minutes, please, by all means.
Okay, just reading through this article, there was a number of points that I just wanted to clarify. Which one was the fifth of July when the council staff spoke to us and said that we had to be out by the twentieth of August? We had actually met with them the week prior on the twenty ninth and they advised that we had seven to eight weeks to be removed. There was also a time prior to that where two other staff members from council came and spoke to us when the lease did become month to month. And they assured us that we would not have a four week or a short period to vacate premises. They would help us and other not-for-profits in that space find new... They would help us and other not-for-profits in that space find new premises. Point 35, we did decline taking on Albert Street, and that was because the council staff that spoke to us on the 29th could not assure us that council would make a decision that we could take a term lease and how long that would be for, and that building didn't suit us as a not-for-profit RTO, wasn't big enough for our training space. And on point 36, it says that we had contingency arrangements in place. We didn't have anything in place. We had courses organised, we had not-for-profits in there using the space, and with four weeks notice as to pack up a RTO and our other work and learning centre, and what we do with the community there, to find a space and move to try and not upset too many people, and our training and business was quite hard to do. So, that's all I wanted, just to put it out there that exactly where things were and how they occurred.
Julie, thank you so much for that. One of the challenges in relation to this is we're effectively tabling and speaking to some matters tonight that are not our reports, but I'm just wondering, on the basis of that and what you have raised, it may just be worthwhile for the record, because I think it sounds to me it's more about your wanting to ensure matters in relation to the record be held with us as well. If I can ask the CEO to connect with you after the meeting, to be able to gather up that information, so that we have, would that be okay with you?
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
We just don't want community to think that we've...
Understand.
We jumped and, you know, left the ship and left them all there.
No, completely understand, Julie. Thank you for your patience, and as I say, the nature of the report is it is an external one, but I think for the fullness and completeness of process, if you are comfortable, the CEO will reach out to you, get that information from you, so that we have that on record in terms of your perspective on it as well. Councillors, are there any questions for Julie? No? Thank you very much for your time, and thanks for being our first speaker back in the room.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you so much. 12.2 is a petition of support for the new public toilets on the north side of the Mall Activities Centre. This is 12.1 in relation to our agenda more broadly. David Hollis. Welcome, David, good to see you.
Hi, there you go.
I'm sorry, David, sit tight, I'm going to have to allow you some time to get councillor Gibson back. So, allow me to do that. These are the joys of hybrid. We manage our in-the-building opportunities, but also those things that are happening And for those joining us online, the nature of the agenda is available to you. If you go to the councillors' website, you'll be able to download the agenda and follow along with us. On the screen, of course, you can see each of the individual items as we go through and call them. For the most part, I think tonight we're going in order, from time to time councillors reorder them and hear them in different sequence, particularly if we have a long agenda and there's things we need to get through before we get to things that the gallery may have a level of interest in. But on the nature of those matters at the moment, we are in sequence, so we'll just keep wandering through. We're just hearing from members of the public who are looking to address council and attending to some technical issues in relation to other speakers who would wish to present to us as well. Welcome back councillor Gibson. David, three minutes, over to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and fellow Latrobe City councillors, and other members of the community here today. My name's David Hollis, I'm a long-time resident of Latrobe City in Gipsland. I don't represent anyone here but myself today, or any other groups. I started a petition last year to address an issue that's concerning to me and others in the community, which is lack of public toilets on the north side of the Mall CBD. I believe this is item 12.1 on the agenda today. I'd just like to extend my thanks to those who supported the petition and for letting me have my say. After the Mall Gov Hub opened and a community cafe was located there, I've been in the Church Street area a lot more this year and been shopping at the local retailers. On several occasions, I've struggled to walk to the public toilets, which are located on Commercial Road, when I've been in town, due to my occasional mobility issues. I have a close friend who has bladder issues, and they also face this barrier to using the area in question. They can't walk very far when the need arises. There's toilets located in the Gov Hub building, which I asked to use one time, but was told the public can't access them. Recently, I discovered the toilets at LCHS, however, they are not well-advertised, or signposted, or available to people who walk in off the street. They are there for patients of LCHS, I believe. If I didn't know about them, and I'm very well-informed about the town, then not many others would know they are there either. Other people have told me they've had to ask retailers to use the toilets in their shops. People with young kids and those with mobility issues are likely to avoid the area if they can't access amenities. I've been told this by several people, that they avoid the area. Many years ago, I believe, there were public toilets located behind the Mall Post Office. However, they were poorly lit and a safety hazard, and I believe they were demolished. I think the area could be vastly improved if there was a public restroom open in the Church Street shopping precinct, especially during business hours. They could be designed in a way that is safe to use, clean, and not attract vandals. I've had to use public toilets in other places, which are self-cleaning and also include safety features that reduce the incidence of public order offences. The existence of CCTV in the area is another reason this infrastructure would be very different to the prior facilities that existed in the area. Alternatively, the existing toilets at LCHS could be better publicised with signage and informing people where to access them, but this may require partnership between the two organisations. I believe there's also toilets located at the new CFA building, which will also need signage if they can be accessed by the public, given the recent developments in the area and the need to attract more foot traffic for retailers and the plans for future growth. I think it's a good idea for the councils to plan for this. Thank you.
Thank you, David. If you just stay with us for a moment, the councillors may have some questions for you. councillor Gibson.
Sorry, and thank you for coming and speaking to us. Look, this is a real, a personal one for me, public toilets, because, you know, not everybody, and as you can see with my operation, I'm not bouncing out of my skin tonight, you know, not everyone can bounce down to the toilets, whether they be 600 metres away or anything else, so I thank you for that. Can I ask, though, if, what's some of the stories that people have come to you and said about this? Because I would think that there'd be a lot of, oh, people would be so embarrassed about being caught short.
They've tried to shop in the area and they haven't been able to access toilets or have known when they are, and they won't come back, they won't come back while they can't use a toilet while they're shopping. That area is pretty, you need to encourage foot traffic in that area in particular, with some of the retailers are shutting down and stuff.
And we do have an ageing population, too.
Yeah, with Latrobe City being an aged care centre of excellence, I suppose you'd say.
Now, we are doing a review on public toilets, so note that that's happening anyway, but I do take on board what you're saying, another one, because same type thing came up about Moe, and people were soiling themselves because they couldn't get to the toilet, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for listening.
Councillors, any further questions? No? Thanks, David. Glad to grab a seat, thanks for joining us. Councillors, we're just reorganising again, we've managed to make the interweeble's work, so bear with us. We will try, if at all possible, I'm sorry councillor Gibson, I was trying to avoid it before, but we hadn't connected in, so take your time, so we will be going to 10.1 and then 10.2. Okay, small screen, audio right, right, yep, okay, I think we are now good. So we have Lisa Proctor with us to speak on initially item 10.1, then we'll go to questions, councillors, and then we'll move to item 10.2. Thanks for joining us, Lisa, over to you, three minutes, and then questions from councillors, if they have any. Please, I'm just making sure you can hear us okay, though, before we start.
Doesn't seem to.
No. Just going to check. Lisa, do you have sound on at your end, and can you hear us? Can we jump into the, I guess there isn't live chat? Just let Lisa know that we can see her, we can't hear her, and I'm not sure that she Okay, so Lisa has her hand up. Just some chat there for you, Lisa. Connecting to audio, Lisa, we're just having that connecting in now, so that should make it clearer, and it failed. Yeah, I'm just reluctant to make councillor Gibson walk all the way back into the room again. Sorry, bear with us for everyone that's with us and joining us live, we're just going to try and work this through, we're going to give it a little bit more, oh, yep, it's back, I'm only just trying to check it because there's connecting audio, we'll see if that connects in. Audio fail. Are there dial-in options?
On the phone only? Do you dial in at all?
Yeah, we might just, we've seen and we know that it is her from the credentialing she's been to. Yeah, I think we'll allow Lisa to drop out, I'm not going to get councillor Gibson back at this point, we'll just give her a few minutes, if that's okay? I just don't want to make a bit of walking back and forth.
She can hear us, but you can't.
Okay, so she can hear us. Yeah, it is trying, Lisa, we're seeing it at our end, it's connecting and she's gone. It is trying to connect in, and then it's not holding. If not, other options?
She can just call and dial her phone, so we can get in touch with her.
And it'll just be, yep, and then we'll just confirm for the minutes that we did see her try to connect in, and the only accessible pathway for us was for her to dial in, so she won't be on screen, but we won't be causing any problems in terms of governance. If someone's able just to wander down and let councillor Gibson know that we haven't forgotten about it, but we're having some technical issues, and we will come and get her once we work it through. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Lisa's back in now, must be on the computer this time.
Okay. Yep, audio's connecting in. Yes, that's a tick. So, I think...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, great.
Okay, I'm just going to put you on silence, just...
Sure. Yeah, so that Lisa doesn't get a loop back in his drop-in, yes, we can hear her, three minutes.
Okay, thanks to councillors and to the CEO for your time tonight, and to the GAO too. Look, I just want to speak firstly on item 10.1. Firstly, let me say that I'm, yeah, so you're happy for me to start now?
Yes, thank you, Lisa, if you could, that'd be great, and then we'll do questions, and then 10.2 after that.
Lisa, let me say I'm extremely concerned that there has been not one, but two codes of conduct raised by councillors recently. Can you hear me? So, just getting a lot of throwback there.
Yes, yes, we can hear. I think probably proceed unless we interject to let you know that we've either lost you or there's any other issue. I'd say just, we'll go back, we'll start the clock again, and just, yeah, please go ahead and continue unless you hear otherwise.
All right, so I'll start from scratch, I just want to say that, me being a former councillor, I just want to say that I'm extremely concerned that there has been not one, but two codes of conduct raised by councillors recently. I must admit, I don't ever recall this occurring previously, since the inception of Latrobe City Council, and Madam Mayor, please correct me. So, councillor Darren Howe, Laura, Tracy Lund, and Dan Clancy raised this matter seeking a finding of serious misconduct. My understanding is the process is that councils had an opportunity to involve this mediation, prior to this going to a councillor conduct briefing. So, Madam Mayor, can you please confirm to the community that this mediation actually occurred? And my understanding is the panel stated that the code, your own code allows for mediation of an internal resolute process too, so why did this not resolve? What I also find hard to comprehend is that three incidents were alleged on the 9th of July, the 2nd of August and 8th of August, and the application was made on the 25th of August. So, question to the applicants is if the alleged allegations were so serious, given the first incident happened on the 9th of July, why didn't they raise this at the time and have discussions? And why not have those, you know, you have plenty of time to resolve the first incident, but it's from the 9th to the 25th, the way the report is written. So I call upon councillors Howe, Lund, Clancy, to advise the community now at this meeting, if there was any interventions on the 9th or immediately after, and if not, why not? Councillor Harriman has stated in the panel report, and I quote, this might be in 10.2, no real opportunity for bonding amongst new councillor group, which has resulted in the councillors with no real connection. So that, to me, is pretty alarming, that that's been reported upon in that report, saying there's no real connection or bonding occurring. So as a member of the community, this raises concerns around governance and ability to work as a team for the betterment of the community. I call upon you, Madam Mayor, to seek immediately for a mediator to be appointed through the local government minister, so that councillors can work for the betterment of this community. Got nothing further to say on 10.1.
Thanks, Lisa. And just to remind anyone speaking tonight, we went over them very briefly at the outset, but there isn't that capacity for questions from speakers, however, those public questions can be put to the CEO, who can take them as a question on notice, and will respond to those accordingly. Councillors, do we have any questions for Lisa? Councillor, no? Councillor Howe?
I was mentioned in 10.1, but I had no involvement in it, that's, so it's not a question, but it's...
Sorry, yeah, so 10.2 then, my apologies, it would have been 10.2 then, but the same applies as to the mediation process.
Thank you councillor Howe. Lisa, would you like to speak to us in relation to 10.2?
Yeah, so just to pick up on 10.2 again, you know, I've got really concerns around how another councillor conducts, where there's a resolution process that can actually be followed, and it would be really good if all councillors, that were the applicants in this one, again, can explain to the community why... that were the applicants in this one, again, can explain to the community why this wasn't resolved and why it had to go to a panel hearing. The question to you madam mayor too is what, what is the cost of this? Does the community pay for the panel hearings? It's something that the community really needs to know around this as well, I don't know the answer to that, I've never had to go through these processes but I think that is something that the community needs to know, who pays for these panel hearings? And why weren't they resolved in a mediation process, given that you've got an internal resolution process? Which my understanding is the report says allows two processes and then also you have, you've also got a mediation process as well. So again, the question, who pays for these hearings? Hopefully there's no cost that's going to be imposed upon the, the community. What really stands out to me, code of conduct, is that there is in fact no process for councillor briefings and how they're to be conducted. This is to me requires urgent attention, you know, this council's been, did I think back in, was it 1996? So since 1996, I find it really hard to believe that there hasn't been a councillor briefing procedure put in place. So if there hasn't, yeah, it's a gap that needs to be filled rather quickly without a framework on how these meetings are going to be conducted, there's certainly no boundaries irrespective of how it's been respected, any meetings in any event. Councillor briefings, when I was a councillor, was in fact an op, questions to be asked through the, through the CEO because we always had that respect going back through managers. Now in summary, we have two codes of conduct where matters, there has been opportunity for councillors to have the opportunity to resolve this and, and they didn't. I would also ask the applicants, that to the community and say why these matters weren't resolved by the way of internal mediation process and why they had to go to a panel to be resolved. The outcomes are pretty clear, I note that emotional intelligence training has been recommended as an outcome in this and I would also think that the, the mayor and CEO and all councillors, that they actually consider undertaking this training, in addition, if you haven't undertaken any in bullying or cultural awareness training, that may be something that council as a whole could benefit. I've put questions to council today but it was too late for them to be tabled tonight but that's something that if it hasn't been undertaken, councillors could be extremely proactive to, to try and make sure these sort of things don't come up again, all it is doing is affecting, you know, good outcomes to the community. I've got nothing further to add in that regard.
I could help by putting my microphone, sorry Lisa, we are aware we're at time, but we are also aware there's a delay and some difficulty with the audio. I will allow the CEO to respond in terms of questions on notice and public questions in relation to format and feedback to you in relation to that.
Thanks, madam mayor, happy to contact yourself Lisa and take some of those further questions. I know you had sent some through today which in the correspondence, I think you'd sent back to me indicated you'd like those tabled at the next council meeting, so we can, that's, and with questions on notice now, there was a change to the governance rules that they actually need to be one day prior to the council meeting and they're not necessarily items that have to be related to the council meeting agenda and that's why that change was made, sorry, the reason why that change was made was to allow council officers time to prepare a response for the council meeting so that it wasn't just rushed on the day but if you have further questions, happy to receive those and present them to the councillors.
Thanks very much Steve, councillor Gibson is back with us. Okay, yeah. Councillors, questions for Lisa at this point on 10-2?
May I ask, I didn't hear anything that was said on 10-2, may I have a, a brief overview or she hasn't spoken?
No, she has spoken, sorry, she went to 10-1, sorry, I did 10-2. The CEO has questions on notice that he's going to bring back as well and some will potentially be tabled at the next meeting.
That's okay, the only thing is if it's a question, we can't ask, we can't speak to it, so I don't know what was said. That's, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, Steve, one recap?
I've got no idea.
So I think generally the comments were made were in relation to obviously item 10.2 in that there was some commentary regarding councillors undertaking further training, I think aligned with one of the notices and motion that might be on the agenda tonight and so I can provide you with a copy of that recording councillor Gibson, as it is available and you can have a look at that, if there's any further questions you have, I'm happy to take those and respond to you.
Okay. So, no, there's also a question in relation to costs councillor Gibson.
Some other questions in relation to the cost of the process, whether that's borne by the community or some other process. I think there was also question, commentary in relation to the matters being resolved prior to having gone off to a conduct panel process was the, the main points that I captured.
Happy to allow some flexibility councillor, given that, you know, we were having you make your way back, I don't, I don't wanna, we didn't wanna push your tolerance on back and forwards to the room, so please.
Oh, no, thank you, so i-if, if I'm getting what was said and I'm sorry, I, I don't know. So the process of if a code of conduct is brought forward was, was that explained what the steps are?
Through you madam mayor, so the, Ms Proctor did raise questions in relation to that which haven't yet been responded to, so there were some questions that you might have just been coming back into the room, she did table today but under the new governance rules, they actually need to be in by last Friday to be in, give us time to provide a response in relation to those, so there were some other questions that were raised during the conversation and I'm happy to follow up with the questioner and provide those back to councillors as a response. And so yeah, there was, I suppose those main points that I were recapping on were in relation to whether the matters could have been resolved prior through an internal arbitration process, the cost associated with the matters and some questions then in relation to the training and support, I think in terms of it might be available to councillors, but I'm happy to go back and review those and provide a further response.
Okay, may I ask directly to Lisa Proctor, may I ask what the concerns were? Would that cut throughs? Cause I've got no idea.
Very briefly a recap Lisa, if that's possible, we were having some, we had to give councillor Gibson some time to get back to the chamber, so we've...
No, that's okay. Yeah, my apologies councillor Gibson, I probably jumped too quickly onto the next matter. Overall my concerns were why these matters had to go to a panel hearings, given that council, my understanding is the report says council has got two ways to resolve, they've got an internal dispute resolution process, then you've got mediation. So my concern was exactly why this had to go, these both had to go to panel hearings, that to me was extremely alarming. I also had concerns around emotional intelligence training that, you know, might be beneficial for everyone to undertake it plus also the likes of bullying and cultural awareness training, you know, it wasn't aware where the councils had in fact done that, that may be something that council may wanna consider in the, into the future and I also called upon the mayor to request the local government minister to appoint a mediator given that the comments, who would make comments in a report under 10.1 by a fellow councillor and I, I repeated that request in, in item 10.1 and item 10.2.
No worries, I, I was just about to pull you up because 10.1...
You'll stay away from 10-1, that's okay, we'll keep you away from that councillor.
It's indefinitely 10.2.
So it was 10, 10.2 was related, yeah, so then, is that a little clearer for you councillor?
Yeah, it is, thank you. Okay, so the answers you've got today or are coming, is that going to address your concerns?
Um, probably, well, if, if the mayor actually does actually contact the local government minister to appoint a mediator, that would alleviate my concerns most definitely.
Um, one more please, and if there's a mediator actually appointed, what do you believe would come out of that?
I mean, in, in one of the reports, it was noted that one of the councillors had raised concerns around bonding, so, you know, better relationships, the whole point is, is council represents community, so you have to work together irrespective of whether you agree or disagree with things, you still have to work, work together respectfully and when things end up in, in panel hearings, it's very hard to turn back from that, so they, they can get really quite personal, I'm not saying that's actually occurred but for me as a community member, in fact, two, two matters, two codes of conduct in two meetings is very concerning.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, thanks councillors, thanks Mr CEO.
Thanks Lisa. I've got the, move Lisa back. Done. Okay councillors, we'll keep moving through, we have additional speakers, we're moving back to 12-1, so this is a petition in support for the new public toilets on the north side of Moorwall Activity Centre, the next speaker is Gavin Lamb. Nope, okay. And the next is 14-2, this is a former Budgeri Primary School heritage status, Leanne Potter. Welcome Leanne, good to have you with us, three minutes over to you and then we'll ask some questions if that's okay.
Okay, thank you once again for this opportunity to stand here and talk about the former Budgeri School building, and item, agenda item 14.2. On, in April 2016, on behalf of the Budgeri Hall Reserve Committee, I nominated the Budgeri School Building and the surrounding trees and gardens for inclusion on the Victorian Heritage Register. On March 16 this year, six years later, we finally got a disappointing but not surprising response. The recommendation was to not include it, we now have until May 17 to actually respond to that. Budgeri Hall Reserve Committee and Friends of the Budgeri School are both formulating a comment and will be asking for that to go to a hearing at the Heritage Council. In the six years between writing the nomination and today, we've learnt a lot. We've found lost history, lost photos and lots of oral history of what actually took place and we would approach the situation quite differently. We recognise this was always going to be a tough journey, repeatedly told by Heritage Victoria that they wouldn't be accepting a school onto the register. However, we're a very determined and committed community who's not willing to give up until we've actually saved our school. We've raised the profile of the Budgeri School from being a little building on the end of the road to nowhere to Russell North actually raising it in question time at State Parliament. Two weeks ago, the state planning minister, Richard Wynn, was in Terrelegan and he was approached by a journalist about Budgeri School, he was able to respond without hesitation. He'd been fully briefed on our situation and the significance that the school actually holds to our community. So it was really lovely to see that incredible profile being lifted. We know this site is of huge significance to our community but also Latrobe Valley, Gippsland and the whole of Victoria. We just now need to get other people to realise that. The Heritage Vic Register has only one, oh sorry, only three rural one-room schools listed and unfortunately one of those was burnt down last year. Once we lose these little schools, a big part of our history is actually going to disappear. Many of the other remaining historical school buildings have a local government heritage overlay to protect them. Heritage Victoria has named them but was unable to name that any of the internal features that any of them had, including the teacher's stage and the blackboards that we still have intact in place. Heritage Victoria also named a few that had either a teacher's residence or a shelter shed, we have both. The Mechanics Institute of Victoria also notified us that we are the only precinct in Victoria that has the original school, original hall, original teacher's residence and the original shelter shed. It makes it fairly significant. This unfortunately was not able to be recognised by Heritage Victoria because it was outside what they considered the scope of the original application was in 2016. We'd like to acknowledge the considered approach that Latrobe City Council has taken to the statement of recommendation and urge that council support the independent heritage consultant who has asked for further assessment and investigation to be undertaken on this incredibly important place. The Budgeri community, being a one-third owner of the property, looks forward to working closely with council in future decisions concerning the school building regardless of the outcome of the heritage application.
Thanks Leanne, thank you. Councillors, any questions for Leanne please? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you very much for that, so if you had your time again, the scope would be a lot larger.
It would be a lot larger and it would be a precinct rather than one building.
Now, I don't know whether you can answer the question or not or we can take it on, on notice. Can, alright, we asked about the school, can we actually build it and have the actual precincts, can we do that?
No, it has to go back as a whole new application, so I've already asked Heritage Victoria about that. They said they weren't able to respond to that but that could be a good idea. But if it holds us up another six years, that's actually going to be hugely detrimental to the state of the school as it is.
Hmm, okay, so does it have to take so long and would you know?
Out of our hands, that's, that's Heritage Vic's process. Yeah, they have an undetermined length that they can take, so it could well be six or more years in actual fact.
It could be longer.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. But the part that concerned me with what you said is when you were doing the application, it seemed like Heritage Victoria had already made up their mind before they, they actually went through the, the application. Is that a fair comment or not?
A very political comment. I, my understanding was, and they kept saying, you know, that we just can't take on any schools, there was 800 schools built pre-1873, there's not many of them actually surviving, only 100 and they don't want to take all 100 of those onto their registers, so they're very reluctant to accept any at this stage.
Any further questions? Nope. Leanne, thanks very much for your time, appreciate it. Councillors, moving on to 14-3. So this is the use and development of land extractive industry sand quarry at Terrelegan West Road, Maryvale. Our speaker is Chris Blackwood, the manager and partner of Latrobe Valley Sands Pty Ltd. Welcome Chris.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Latrobe Valley Sands is owned by two well-known Gippsland families that have been supplying materials for the construction industry for many years. We have a strong understanding on the importance of employing people in a local community. We've been working on this application since 2012 with our consultant who has an extensive experience in the extractive industries. Once our proposal was developed, the plan was then put out to all relevant stakeholders for comment and scrutiny. This process, which took nearly 10 years to finalise, involved a number of reviews and third-party advice to give us confidence to put our proposal to council. We feel the location of the site will be far less intrusive than the present site after extensive design and modelling and given that the process, processing and transport is all further west, bringing the site closer to the paper mill. All stages of the proposal have been given the same consideration. Due to our recent growth, the current site will be exhausted in five to eight years. Unless we can relocate to the new site to continue our operations, this application is very important not only for the longevity of our business but also to the people we employ and the 45 customers that we supply on a daily basis. We currently employ 13 full-time staff and that will increase to over 20 if successful. We supply 15 concrete plants in the Gippsland area who also employ 120 people and more than 200 subcontractors. We have the only supplier of sand to the three rooftop plants in Victoria. Those three plants distribute rooftiles throughout Gippsland and across the state and also they employ over 120 people. So we have five, we have over 500 direct people who rely on us supplying the sand. If we are successfully relocating the business, the new site, we aim to increase the amount of people we employ by over 60%. Plus, it will be, have a massive flow-on effect to contractors, suppliers and the general community. Given the time span of the construction on the new site, which will estimate, we estimate will be two to five-year period and the processing plant being several years away, we do not underestimate the concerns of the sensitive receptors raised with us at the community meeting. We believe that those concerns will prove to be unfounded over time and our track record at our current site with statutory authorities shows that. We were pleased but not surprised with the draft report regarding the proposal supported, submitted to the council by the planning team. We see little issue with the 25 conditions that they have placed in the application, the majority of which we, which are consistent with the endorsed work plan. the majority of which are consistent with the endorsed work plan. We will take officer advice and will aim to ensure that we not only comply but also have better communication with the closer receptors as we move forward in the development stage. Finally, I would just like to thank Latrobe City planning team for communicating with us throughout the process. As we have no background in, in this process, Karen Egan was extremely efficient in returning emails and phone calls. The fact is, you could send, you could send an email and within an hour, we would have either receive a response or a phone call. As I have said, the above, as I've said, this application is extremely important for our business to keep growing. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Councillors, do we have any questions? Councillor Middlemiss?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chris, through my involvement on various council transport committees, which covers an extensive area, I've had a lot to do with transport of sand out of the Kuyurup-Cranbourne area. There's a lot of proposals there to, to expand the pits there because of the almost insatiable demand for sand for Melbourne. Can you tell me why your sand is used by the rooftop manufacturers and not Kuyurup sand?
Graham, overly, probably over the last 15 years, a lot of the sand did come out of Cranbourne and Kuyurup area, Langmorean area for the tile plants. But the rooftop plants need a coarse sand. And the Hornet Hill sand, which is what our resource is, is the only sand in this area. And for them to get coarse sand, it's got to come out of Latrobe Valley or Backers Marsh or up in that area. They need the coarseness for the strength up the top and then a bit of fine sand then below to, to form their rooftop. So all they do is add cement to the sand and that makes a rooftop. So what they found with our practice is not only consistent with their grades that they require, but it's also consistent with supply, which they were having difficult with getting out of Langlang and Cranbourne.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Madam Mayor, may I have a second question?
Sure, of course.
Depending on the permission of the councillors, I may move the officer's recommendation. But if I did, I would be proposing an amendment, and this may come as a surprise to you, so I'll ask you. I would propose that the transport restriction with the loaded trucks, there's a specific route for the loaded trucks. I would propose or suggest to my fellow councillors that they consider adding a condition that the empty trucks use that route going back to the pit. Would that cause you a problem?
I don't think that would cause us a problem. I think, well, we, once we develop the quarry, as I said, it's going to take probably between up to five to 10 years to get it up and going properly. We're hoping that the trial and bypass might even be through in, in that period as well, which is going to make it a lot easier for trucks to, coming through from Sale or the, up from the east and to come back through that way empty. The only supplies we have, which on a daily basis is, is a sale, a couple of concrete plants at sale and also Latrobe Valley Concrete, which is in Rockler Road in Terrelegan. So, but it would be something we could put, put into consideration for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Graham. Councillors, any further questions? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that. Can I just ask, or would you know, without you being able to expand and eventually your industry or your business would go down the tube, what would that do to the construction industry?
It would destroy, I wouldn't destroy it, I should say. It, it would definitely, at the, the, the demand is so high even at the moment and is increasing as we go forward, that it would leave a hell of a hole in the market. And even our competitor next door, we don't call them a competitor because we actually work together, but they wouldn't be able to handle the, the volume that we do, as well as their own volume to their own customers. They wouldn't be able to handle it. They just wouldn't have the capacity to do it. So it would definitely put a hell of a hole in the, especially the 15 concrete plants in, in Gippsland. So we supply wholesome concrete plants as well as our own in Morrigal, through to Mafra, Sale and across the Yarren. So, so it would shut their business down, basically.
No worries. Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillors, any further questions? No, thank you very much for your time. Now, we have jumped around a little bit, but I believe we have now heard from each of our speakers except for the gentleman who hadn't arrived. So Gavin Lamb hasn't arrived while we've been speaking? Nope. Okay. We will continue to move on. Thank you to our speakers this evening. Just to recap, for any matters of public questions, they need to be submitted to the CEO. Our governance rules don't allow for questions during public speaking, but I do note that the CEO has picked up on the general theme and has made some undertakings in relation to providing that feedback. But the nature of question time is, and public participation is very much people to make known their perspectives on things and not necessarily to put questions to the council per se, but the CEO will follow up and provide that information that he committed to. All we had on that. Councillors, we then start moving through. Next on the agenda, our notices of motion. This is item nine on our agenda itself. We have three of those items tonight. The first is item 9.1. This is councillor briefing procedure. Do I have a motion, please? Councillor Gibson?
Moving, please.
Moving, thank you. Do I have a second, please? Sorry, councillor Harryman. That little yellow hand was there out of the corner of my eye.
I have a second, Madam Mayor.
Sorry if I'm making you jump around quite a bit to get my attention. I'm trying not to, but you're literally sitting on the floor, down over there, and that little hand pops up. So councillor Harryman is our second. Do we have any opposition, councillors? No opposition. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Councillor Clancy? Opposition? Councillor Gibson, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought it was a really easy one, has three against, but we, we run on governance, as you know. Now, we don't have a procedure for our briefing, our briefing meetings. Now, we have for everything else, but we don't have one for our, our actual councillor briefing. So this, to me, is an error that we haven't picked up on before. Now, I, I would suggest with what's gone down, and I, I won't touch on the different codes, but this would actually help, that we have a procedure in place. In, in light of what we do with everything else, we do have procedures, policies and procedures, and it is all about good governance. So as I say, I thought it was a very easy one, but maybe not.
Councillor Harryman, to speak or reserve?
Reserve, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Harryman. Councillor Clancy, did you just speak?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And it might be an easy one, but not to be too challenging on it either. But generally, for notices of motion, when they come through and a report is, you know, called to be undertaken, I'm fully supportive of those because I think it's a really good opportunity to bring discussion and better practices to council, but I'm struggling just to see the, the connection here. The notice of motion talks about two existing documents, the governance rules and the councillor code of conduct that councillor Gibson's put in her notice of motion. So I'll just speak to both of those. The governance rules, which is overseen by local law one, we adopted last year, 2nd of August meeting. So it's August last year. And the councillor code of conduct was agreed to, I think, in February meeting and signed by each of the councillors here in this room in March 2021. So it's March last year. The governance rules that we talk about in this notice of motion, they're meeting procedures. They talk about, you know, movers and seconders and how we adopt minutes and who speaks when. And, you know, they're very much the, the rules that we, the councillor Gibson just talked about. The councillor code of conduct covers all the behavioural aspects of the role of being a councillor and the code that sits on top of, the councillor code sits on top of and, and underneath and surrounds, I suppose, all meetings, briefings, interactions, conversations, phone calls, et cetera. Everything that we do as councillors and how we behave. And it says inside the code of conduct, our interaction with staff, council staff, and our interaction with community members and our interaction with each other. I'm struggling to see how there's, there's a need for an additional procedure to sit underneath what, what already exists that covers everything. The notice of motion mentions that the councillor briefing procedure and councillors would be aware that, that the briefings are held in the same format, well, they used to be, when we weren't in COVID times. They were, they're held in the same format in the same room as we sit here at the moment. And on the Mondays that we don't meet, on the first Monday of the month, they're held on the other Mondays. The briefing agenda is sent to councillors, officers, and, and we have a week in advance to read that, question, raise any issues. The briefings are not a decision-making forum, I understand that. But the process is covered by the councillor code of conduct to ensure that the behaviour of the councillors is as it should be during, during the briefing, like every other meeting, whether it's an advisory meeting or a, or a community meeting that we have. I've only been on council since 2016, so I, I know we had a speaker here this evening who talked about since 97 or 96 that they hadn't seen anything that had breached the councillor code of conduct. And in my five and a half years, I haven't seen an event where the councillor code of conduct has, has been, been breached, except for, for the, for the one that obviously we, we're not going to talk about tonight at all. But so that's in 118 briefings, I counted those up. I haven't seen this needed or referred to or, or used at all, except for in July last year. So for me, it doesn't, doesn't seem, in my experience, that the need, the, the rules that govern us are, are the things that, that actually need to improve. It's, it's the, the way that we interact with each other and the way that we behave during our meetings and our, our briefings and our interactions that, that, that needs some attention. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Miss councillor Clancy. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I, I can't add much further to what councillor Clancy has added, spoken about. It's, he did it in a very exceptional way. I think the, the only issue we're always going to face is that every time we appoint a mayor, a mayor has a slightly different way of chairing meetings and has their own format that they like to abide by. It's still held within the, the code of conduct. And I just feel that each mayor will bring to the table a different flair and the way of doing things. And I, I think that will happen every time we appoint a mayor, but we, we are bound by the rules that are still there and I don't think we, we, we need to have another report brought back about the way we operate briefings. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillors, any further? Councillor Howe, then councillor Middlemiss?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't be supporting this notice of motion tonight. As mentioned previously, we have a sound councillor code of conduct that we all signed early last year. Regardless of what the meeting is, whether it's live streamed or not, as councillors, we need to conduct ourselves with courtesy and respect. A briefing is not a decision-making forum and I don't believe it requires the same level of formality that a council meeting, such as we're in tonight, does. Briefings are all about discussion, asking questions, exploring ideas, and we should always treat fellow councillors, officers and guests as we, we would like to be treated with respect and dignity. This is a common decency which is covered adequately in our code of conduct. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Howe. Councillor Middlemiss, who are the next to speak?
Push the right button, helps every time. Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's, this council was elected in 97, or the first, the first of the councils elected in 97. And we have operated under a procedure which is often referred to in organisations as custom and practice, which has served us very well for that, what is it, 25 years? But I don't have a problem with the officers stepping back and having a look at how we run our briefings just to see if there is some area where they can be improved. And when saying that, I must emphasise that briefings are informal, they are wide-ranging and they are in exchange of views around matters that are being discussed. So if a report is to come back, I would not be supporting a report which was totally prescriptive. I would be interested if officers can see some improvements we could make, but I would have to emphasise that it is a totally different format to this meeting. It is informal. It allows discussion. It allows an exchange of views, which we're limited to in, in this procedure. So I'm happy to support a report being prepared. Remember that report only comes back to us to decide whether it's relevant or not, so. 25 years, perhaps time to have a look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Lund?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll not be supporting this motion as I don't think or believe it's the job of the CEO to draft us a procedure for the conduct of our discussions in the briefing sessions. Briefings are workplaces. They require us to conduct ourselves professionally and respectfully. And the briefings allow us to build a strong working relationships with our teams in a safe, supportive environment. They allow us a free-flowing space to ask questions, follow up on information, learn from our colleagues and most importantly, from the senior leaders in our organisation. It is one of the key roles of the mayor to chair the meeting and by extension, it is the mayor who manages the discussions in the briefing and helps us to, as a group, to navigate our way through the many hundreds of pages of information we receive at each session. The existing code of conduct and governance rules support the briefing structure as it is. I will add here that after extensive consultation, the code of conduct was agreed to and signed on to by us all just over 12 months ago. And the governance rules were only signed late last year. I do not believe we need a briefing procedure to sit underneath these two. I feel it's a waste of officers' time, ratepayers' money, and frankly, I'm tired of these sort of norms coming into the chamber that are not strategic, they're not in the organisation's interest, and they distract us from the good work we need to do here.
Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Ferguson, thank you.
I think, given it's been so many years that we owe the ratepayers reviews on things to ensure that they function correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. I think we've just about, yeah, Dale? Sorry, councillor Harryman, were you?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at this report that, that came out and there seems to be a number of misunderstandings about how our briefings operate. From what councillors were, were discussing about how it should operate, my view and, and the way it's run from when I've been on council the last 11 years is it was for offices not to debate councillors, but for councillors to ask a question and get answers. That has changed and obviously, there's some councillors here that feel that's not how it operates anymore. My view is the code of conduct doesn't run a meeting. It's there on how we operate in a meeting, but it doesn't codify a meeting. And I think that's what we need. We have a, as councillor Middlemiss said, we have a formalised custom and practice that needs codifying. And I guess the easiest answer to everything is you don't need a seatbelt until you've had a car crash. When we have the car crash, that's when we're going to say shit, we should have had a seatbelt. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Harryman. Councillors, we have had those speakers. Did you want the opportunity to close, councillor Gibson?
Yes, please. Okay, look, it astounds me, some of the points that are raised. Workplaces all have rules. Now, a code of conduct is not how you actually perform the meeting. As one of the councillors said, it's your behaviour. So that's not what this is about. This is about everything else we do. We have a set of rules, how we actually do things, local laws. It, you know, how you pick up your dog poo, for goodness sake. We have rules for everything. So it surprises me, the, the pushback for this. Now, common decency and custom and practice, we've had for a long time and that seemed to, people have a different interpretation on that. If you have a, an actual procedure like you do for everything else, what is the problem with that? I, I really, this is about good governance and it's also strategic. Any workplace you go to, you have your, your plans, you have your policies, and that's being strategic. So why wouldn't you do this? Now, I'm, as I say, I'm just astounded that- Now, as I say, I'm just astounded that we have an organisation that is over $100 million here, and we're balking at having a procedure of how meetings are run. So, sorry, I disagree with some of my councillors. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, we have had a number of speakers, so we do need to put the motion to the vote. Those in favour, I have councillor Gibson, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman, I've got you there on the screen, those against, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Howe, and myself. It is lost. Thank you councillors. Moving on to 9.2. See councillor induction, professional development, councillor Gibson, I note you moving.
Yes, please.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Do I have a seconda, please? Councillor Harriman with the little hand is seconda. Do I have any opposition, councillors? Councillor Law, back to you councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would say I thought this one was pretty easy too, but maybe not. Okay, we've just got two codes of conduct here that are not saying that people actually did the wrong thing, how they did it. So that's not in question, but they're talking about what's come out. Both of them are saying that there actually needs to be training. Now, training for everybody, you know, I think it is imperative that we all train because I suggest that if we actually did a bit more of the training, we wouldn't have been in this place in the first place, unless it was political. But if it was just, you know, there wasn't the training done, we wouldn't be in this mess in the first place. So I'm asking for this to be looked at because that's what all the who has been at, and that's the decision that has come out, that there needs to be more training. So why don't we take the initiative to actually do that?
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Harriman, to speak or reserve?
Reserve, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Councillor Law?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just feel that there's a plethora of courses out there for any councillor to undertake if they need training. We're allocated in our yearly budgets, I think it's about $4,000 or dollars that we can do training courses. So it's, everybody within this room and every councillor has the opportunity at any point in time to avail themselves of any courses that they feel that they're lacking in or need benefits to help them as a councillor. Now, I'm not disputing what councillor Gibson has just said, but the fact is that there's a lot of people, or councillors, that need counselling in probably other areas, but not emotional training. For myself, that has been in the public for probably 40 years in meetings and all the rest of it, I don't feel I need it. I may get passionate at times, but I don't believe I need emotional training. I think it basically comes down to two things that aren't in our governance book here and code of conduct, is one, called common sense, which can't be written, and two, is taking ownership of what we all say. And at the end of the day, it comes back to those two key things. We own what we say, and we have common sense about what we say, and we say it in the manner. And I totally don't believe that we should be spending, say, $7,000 of council money on emotional training if we don't need it. I'd sooner give that to a local community club as a grant, from my point of view. Thank you very much.
Councillor Law, any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Howe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a couple of things to say on this. I've been elected twice, and I've conducted the induction and training twice. Both times I found this adequate, and especially the first time, I found it adequate preparation for me to start my life as a councillor. I was also confident that if there were any gaps, or I didn't understand certain sections, all I needed to do was ask the CEO, the general manager or the mayor for some further one-on-one training. Being a councillor, there is a wide range of knowledge and skills. And if I looked around this chamber, I see eight other councillors, all different strengths and weaknesses, and all with different styles of learning. I know what I wish to achieve in my term as a councillor, and I have a general idea of what training and development I require. I'll then discuss that with the mayor and the CEO, and I'll lay out a path suitable for me. I believe that we owe each other the courtesy of supporting our fellow councillors' individual growth, and I won't be supporting this motion as suggests a one-size-fits-all approach, which in my opinion will be a step backwards. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. Councillor Clancy?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Just taking on councillor Gibson, when you spoke about before, it's hard to disagree with what you're saying, and I'd like to agree with what you're saying. And I think that the issue that I sometimes have is that when these notice of motions come through, it's sometimes it's wording of and the use of, and these notice of motions, I think, came through on the... We had the public holiday on the Monday, so they came through on the Tuesday with no opportunity to sort of have that sort of big discussion previously the week before, or two weeks before, or a month ago. So I think that, and as you said, the code of conduct reports that are in tonight's agenda talked about more training, and then you said more training for everyone. The code of conduct reports don't talk about more training for everyone. And I think that's where we've got the issue for me, not being able to support this. It seems that we do have this mandatory, and councillor Howe just talked about, the induction process for councillors. We have ongoing development and training that councillor Law talked about for councillor improvement. It seems like week in and week out, councillors are doing what is expected of them. They've learnt through, and yes, I understand that it takes a little bit of time to get your feet under the desk. But this motion talks about making sure that all councillors have training so that they know what's right and what's wrong, or they know when to speak with... Think before speaking and things like that, which is where emotional intelligence comes from. I'm of the firm belief here that our community members, and I'm actually even reticent talking about this tonight because I think that I'm wasting time talking about this. The community members I speak to aren't interested in me talking about this. They're not interested in me debating these issues. They're not interested in whether I have mandatory modules on emotional intelligence. If they think I don't have them, then don't vote for me next time that I put my hand up and name on a ballot paper. I think our community are interested in councillors taking on the mountain of work that we have, the transition community that we have, and other councillors have spoken about the work that we're doing. Even the items on the agenda tonight, I think are just a truckload more important than the things we're talking about at the moment. But I think that it is important that we have these discussions. As I say, I can't fault the intent of the motion, but I can't support it as it says because it says that the fact that we need mandatory training in emotional intelligence suggests that we all engage in the conduct that was found to be misconduct, and we don't. So I don't think that we all need that training. So I just can't support that. I don't think that all councillors need to have that training, so I won't be able to support it tonight. But happy to have the discussion in further, in briefings in coming months, weeks.
Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Lund?
First of all, I'm extremely supportive of councillors taking responsibility for their council role. We oversee a significant tied-end entity with a very substantial asset base, and we provide valuable services across our regional city. We have a monumentous challenge in setting the strategic direction for our community as we transition our economy. We need a high level of executive function to do the work. Therefore, it is critical that we avail ourselves of training as we require it. We should be continually building on our professional development to ensure we are equipping ourselves to do this work. We need to be informed, respectful, open to learning, ensuring we are working cooperatively, sorry, cooperatively, collaboratively and effectively with every asset of the... Sorry, every facet of the organisation. The current policy setting encourages us to undertake personal and professional development in a manner which is both tailored to us as individuals and is relevant to the role we do in the chamber. We come from different backgrounds and different walks of life, and therefore what we need to be the best councillor we can be will be different. Some may have a high level of emotional intelligence and may need to work on strengthening other areas in our professional portfolios. Some may have a low level of executive function and need extra support around building their emotional intelligence. It is not for us to determine a one-size-fits-all approach to our councillor training. Under our current policy structure, I'm not only allowed, but I'm also encouraged to set up a development plan that suits me, that works for me, and addresses the knowledge and all the skill gaps that I or other trusted supports identify. Respectfully, I believe it is my responsibility in this role to have the opportunity to customise my professional learning development to the skill gaps I have. It should not be determined by another nom in the chamber that I feel has no merit or value in adding to the strategic direction of the organisation, so I will not be supporting this nom.
Councillors, do I have any other speakers? Sorry, I saw two hands in. I had councillor Ferguson, thank you. Councillor Middlemiss?
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm going to get splinters on this one, I'm sitting on the fence. Given the items listed under 10, there is a perception, which we've heard tonight in our community, that we could perhaps, as councillors, do things better. And I don't think a report along this line that could be made public would go astray in reassuring our council that if we haven't got the right procedures in place now, we soon will have. So I see some value in this proposal to reassure the community, not hiding behind anything. However, emotional intelligence, I've got a view that you can't actually teach somebody emotional intelligence. So I have a problem there with making that compulsory. I think it's down to the individual decency of the individual elected as a councillor. But I still don't think there would be much harm in publicising where we sit on induction and the professional development etcetera, because I think there is some concern in the community around matters currently around item 10. So I'll sit here and think furiously for the next 20 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Harriman, you'd reserved. We'll come back to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Look, I'm in support of this. I know councillors are saying, oh, I've done training and I can get other training. I've been on here four terms. My training has changed and grown every time I've been re-elected. There was no conflict of interest training when I first started, yet that has been a huge part of the last two induction programmes. We still have pre-election training where every candidate has to go through a sit-in-the-room, ticker-box type training, which does really nothing, except explain that you can get your butt kicked if you step over the line in a number of areas. There needs to be further training included. We've come to the point where we're growing in the type of people we're attracting to council. This is about making sure that we eliminate issues before they happen. We've had some issues happen. Let's make sure that the next council doesn't face the same thing. I know there's probably going to be a majority vote against this, and I think that's a shame, it shows ignorance. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Harriman, I think the approach we take towards each other in the room is one where we can have an opportunity to speak freely and openly, and I know that you wouldn't have meant anything in relation to that final comment.
Nothing personal, Madam Mayor, it's just an observation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Councillors, so we've had all of those speakers. Councillor Gibson has the opportunity now to close. Thank you councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I think my fellow councillors for their opinions. And it's no surprise, I don't agree, so that's okay. Now, we're talking about one-size-fits-all and it doesn't fit all, but that's actually what the induction programme is. We all have the same induction programme. Now, I'm sorry, I do not believe, whether it's emotional intelligence or anything like that, I don't think there is a person alive, and I'm not just talking about who's around the table, who couldn't improve. I can't see that. Unless we're saying we're perfect, you can't say that. So I, you know, the more training a person does, I think is to the betterment of not just themselves, but for whatever area they are working in or their life, is my opinion. Now, you know, this all came about from asking questions, and that's what a councillor should be doing. Maybe the way the questions were asked, different people have different points of view on that, but the questions were valid. So I think it is just common sense to actually do more training because, yes, we might have two grand, not four, it'd be nice if we did have four, but we don't, to actually do further training each year, but how many actually take it up? And unless we're saying we're perfect, we all need to do. I'm not saying I'm better than anyone here, nor I would hope are any of you saying that. We all need to look at ourselves. People could say, well, you know, if we looked at ourselves, we wouldn't be in this situation. I would say that it's only because of courtesy that there hasn't been more of this done in the first place. So I, and one of the speakers said about, once you go down this track, it's hard to pull back. Well, okay, let's actually be adults here. Let's actually look and see. Okay, all of this is saying about more training. Unless we're saying we're perfect, why wouldn't we be doing it? And I think our community deserves it from all of us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, we've had speakers. We're now required to put this motion to the vote. Those in favour, see councillor Harriman's hand first on the screen. Councillor Gibson, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, those against, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Howe, and myself. The motion is lost. Thank you councillors. Move on to the third of our notices of motion this evening. This is item 9.3, process for reviewing the code of conduct, governance rules and induction for professional development commencing on page nine of your agenda. Councillor Ferguson, I note you as the main councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll just try and find a seconda in relation. Do I have a seconda, please, councillors? Councillor Middlemiss. So mover is councillor Ferguson, seconda is councillor Middlemiss. Do I have opposition, councillors? And councillor Law? Councillor Ferguson, to you.
Okay, thank you. So obviously the underlying theme is review, reform, setting an example to our ratepayers of our interactions and all of us working together. So here is a process I've put forward for a report on reviewing the code of conduct, the governance rules and the induction for professional development. I think moving forward, that every action that we can all take and look over this report and see where there could have been, you know, in future internal resolution in a respectful and constructive way between councillors to stop the escalation of things. I think that's what the ratepayers would want to see, so that's why I'm putting this forward for this report. And honestly, I couldn't see why anyone wouldn't support good governance. That's what we're elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Councillor Middlemiss, to speak or reserve?
I'll speak, thanks, Madam Mayor. I see this again. I see this again as one of the outworkings of the matters contained at section ten and contained in the last meeting around this matter. And again, it will not hurt this council to review where we are in relation to these matters, because to some extent, we failed in those processes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Law, your next up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, it is still a slightly, I suppose, an emotive subject, but at the end of the day, our council code of conduct covers every one of those items in the actual code of conduct. The issue that we have realistically is that while, when we cross the line at some point or there's some err on the wrong side, is that if the respondent believes that they have done no wrong, the failure to me, to actually have a mediation fails, and that's the problem. And that has been the whole case, and I have to say it with councillor Gibson's, is that she failed.
Councillors, I'll just, hold, let me, let me, let me just, I'll just, thank you, councillors. I think it's fair, it's okay to sit tight for, and hold the clock, please. I just, it, these are difficult conversations. There is a great deal of difficulty for a number of the councillors in the room to be able to discuss these, and there's a lot of feeling about it, there's a lot of sentiment, and I want to be respectful of that, and I want to be clear. But I think the one thing I do understand, having worked with some of you for a short period of time, and some of you for a really, really long time, this is good people in a room trying to work through a really difficult situation. There is no perfect answer, we're not necessarily going to overcome everything tonight, but if we can just do it on the basis of speaking to the facts of the matters we have before us, and not speaking in terms of directly to people, to situations or other circumstance, I think we might just be able to keep it a little bit easier. Just want to let everybody know, as we just take a breath, after ten-two, we will take a break, to allow everybody to have a stretch and move around. I know we're not there yet, councillor Gibson, I'm just letting people know. So we will keep working these matters through, and then we will give everyone a bit of time out of the room. So councillor Law, I'll come back to you. If I could just respectfully ask, so what we do is just stick strictly-
I'll withdraw those comments.
Thank you very much, councillor.
And I apologise to councillor Gibson.
I appreciate that, thanks very much.
I-
I know there wasn't a formal point of order, but satisfied councillor Gibson, councillor Ferguson, I think you were going to speak to me as well. No, 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 I was just going to say, that's okay. I think, I think we're right. We're right, councillors?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, councillor Law, back to you. If we can start the clock again.
But I think if we all have that opportunity to follow the path that we choose, and at the end of the day, if we choose our own path and we don't own up to it, we end up in the situations we've ended up in, and that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillors, do we have anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor Clancy, then councillor Lund.
Oh, sorry, I jumped in.
You can swap if you want.
It's all right. I, already this evening, I've registered my position in reviewing the governance rules because they were adopted in August last year, and councillor code of conduct in Feb and then signed in March, so I've already spoken to those things. And I should say to councillor Ferguson, I so much want to support this, and I, there's parts of your notice of motion that you've put forward that I completely agree with, and I think that, and you've put it in there in writing, internal resolutions can be handled better, and they should be, and certainly in this instance, in the, in the report that's in the ten-two, so I won't mention the other one. And, yeah, so the procedure that I think the applicants were following was, was one within the Local Government Act, as directed to follow. But I believe that you're right, we could do better at this, we could, the act, the act itself could do better at this. And I think council is continuing to have conversations with local government minister through, through our mayor, to ensure that feedback is given. I also believe that it would be more than ideal if this, as a councillor group, that we could not get to this point, that we do sort this stuff out very, very early. That's exactly what I would like to do, and I think that's what you're wanting, wanting to put in this as well. I completely agree with you. So in saying that, parts of the motion I agree with are very valid and worthy for discussion. But once again, and I have this problem nearly all the time with notices of motion, they're raised with so many factors and in points A, B, C, D and E, there's some that I can't agree with, so I can't agree with the whole thing. So the entire notice of motion, for me, can't be supported, even though there's two things in there that I absolutely think are really, really important. So what I would suggest, and I'm not foreshadowing a formal part of it, but certainly, yeah, is that I think that, in the interest of a collegial and great working group that we are, and as I think the mayor mentioned, we're, you know, good people trying to work through something that's really difficult, I'd love to see this brought back to, to a discussion. And I don't think it's going to take, you know, one briefing or one council meeting in June, which is why I can't support this motion, but I think it will take us a couple of sessions, and if they have to be out of, you know, briefing sessions and out of Monday night sessions, I think it's worthwhile to do, because I think that there is a genuine belief of every person that's elected on this council, that they want to carry out their role in the best way that they can possibly do that, and we want to support each other. So I want to support the intent of this, but I think, you know, the details of bringing it back in June and having it all written as a report, I think really just, I can't support that notice of motion, but I certainly support your intent and want to support your ongoing, you know, development as a councillor as well.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Councillor-
Question, please, Madam Mayor.
Question, goodness, I know, I hope I know the answer, or who does?
I don't know. Look, I get what councillor Clancy was saying, and I'm working through the question as, as I speak. Now, are there any points in that, could we separate, or is there any way you believe, okay, do we do a-
A foreshadow?
A foreshadowed motion to, if this is, if this goes down, that I foreshadow that I'll put up point A, B or whatever? Is that a possibility? Can I ask that question?
I guess it's probably two parts to the question. Yes, there's an option for a foreshadow. Some of that context was around being in conversation back to a briefing, so there's some conversations more broadly, that might be a nice foreshadow, not that I'm leading the witnesses at all. Councillor Clancy, I guess a question for you as a speaker, is given, that's a conversation you and councillor Gibson are having, is that something you're interested in?
Yeah, and I think the problem with, that when it sits as a notice of motion, we can't MacGyver it or change it or pull things out, whereas with a report that's been written and put in, and the governance rules say that notice is a motion as published, I think foreshadowing a new motion is probably a better, better way to do it. I'm happy to take that from the CEO.
Yeah, it is- I think we can make- Sorry, councillor Gibson, we're just going to sit tight and get, so the CEO is-
Yeah, because I think the difference-
Strategically looking over your shoulder to the, to the governance crew who sit there with the end poised.
And it always sits as a, can you, can you make an amendment or can you make an alternative? You know, it's a little bit different.
Oh, sorry. No, no, I know-
I think you're part right, that, no, that has to be dealt with, but I, I thought, and rightly or wrongly, and we're going to get that information, I thought that once that's dealt with, you could actually have a foreshadowed motion.
Yeah, so just bear with me, councillors, it's been a while. Councillor Middlemiss?
Just a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If this item, which is nine point five, was lost, there is-
Nine point three.
Nine point three, sorry. I'll put my glasses on, yeah. There is nothing to preclude councillor Ferguson raising this for discussion at the next or following briefing session.
Absolutely, and I'd be very happy to support councillor Ferguson in making more than sufficient time in our briefing agenda to ensure that that happens as a matter of priority, and even providing some independent-
I'm asking you a question because it does appear that there may be a path through this.
I, I think we're nearly there, it's just a matter of the formalisation of process, and I'd be very happy to have a conversation with councillor Ferguson outside the chamber as well to work through some of those things. We talk as a group about what we can include in, but anyway. Far too much talking from me. Mr Pearson, did you have some guidance for us in relation to process?
Yeah, so under the current governance rules, so when a motion like this is presented, there is the opportunity for councillors to make changes or amend the motion. I think the previous governance rules and the, I think councillor Clancy touched on it, the normal process would be that to receive a report in relation to a matter and then have that opportunity for councillors to consider all of the information and then put forward alternatives. It can happen, I just, I think the advice you provided, Madam Mayor, is the best forum to do that would be, in my view, through a council briefing process, where you can have those conversations and then bring something back, if it's required eventually, to a council meeting, so it would be my advice on this matter.
I don't want to put councillor Ferguson on the spot, you've got a notice in play and there's still debate that's happening around the room, but happy to connect irrespective of outcome, connect up after the meeting, have a conversation, work that through for a significant period of time in briefing, for you to be able to work that through, if that helps. Now, I've completely lost where I was. Councillor Clancy, then we had a question from councillor Gibson. Was there another speaker, because I'm now all got it upside down. Is there anyone else?
Yeah.
It's all right, I'm just trying to, yep. Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I take note of what councillor Ferguson and councillor Clancy are saying. I think it would be a really good way forward to, to put this in place, because, you know, this hasn't been done, even when I put my nom in, no one contacted me to, you know, so I think it would be a really good way forward to, okay, how are we doing this? Because, as I say, all of this came out because not, questions were asked and valid points, and all that came out is that there needs to be training. So, you know, I, I think it's really prudent to actually do, put these different things in place, because, you know, while, while some haven't got upset, there, there needs to be more room, because from my opinion is, okay, if you're in the process and somebody says, "Well, you agreed to that and it'll all be fine," there's no room for, well, where's the argy, I could say argy-bargy, but where's, okay, well, no, that's, that's not acceptable, but there doesn't seem to be the room to actually come to a, an agreed position better without pushing it further down the line. So I think it would be really prudent to look at, you know, the processes that could be put in place so that actually can occur, not, well, unless you do what I say, whack, you know. We, we need to find a better way forward for all of us, because otherwise, we're just wasting ratepayers' money.
Councillor Gibson, thank you, and we are furiously going through notes and these, as you would have noticed, as we've worked this through, but I think some of that conversation before probably informs it. Substantially relevant to the motion, could leave us a little bit on the back foot, the officers are just exchanging information back and forth. So I think if we deal with this matter and then we can have some conversations as well, then we'll work that through. So councillor Gibson has spoken, anyone else wish to speak? Councillors, I don't want to get, don't want to miss anybody in the process. Sorry, councillor Lund.
Sorry, I, I just have some notes to speak, I'm not sure where they're hitting now. Oh, sorry. Sorry, apologies. So, so I'll just speak to the motion that's in play now. So I won't be supporting this notice of motion either. I think our current code of contact, conduct is sound, and it has shown to be working effectively. It is based on guidance and reference to best practice in other councils, and we adopted and agreed and signed them only in March last year. I don't believe there's any reason to rethink the governance code or the rules now. I note the specific reference to a focus on information resolution. Do you want me to stop talking?
No, please keep going.
Oh, sorry.
I'm making myself speaking back.
It is my view that both the state resume and our own code are entirely consistent and both put the focus on local internal resolutions for issues between councillors. It is very clear in the procedures anchored into the code that the councillors may wish to familiarise or self-wish. So I believe that this information, what I'm saying is, that notice of motion is effectively redundant, in my opinion, and I strongly feel our community does deserve us to turn our attention to the broader significant strategic challenges we face, and to stop looking inwards, because this inward focus is a rather big distraction from the work that we need to do. Thank you.
Councillor Lund, thank you, sorry, and apologies, the CEO, we're trying to, we're just trying to find a way through to make sure that what we do contains what that intent was working through into the next, so there wasn't, that I wasn't listening to you, I'm just trying to make sure that I get it very, very clear before we work through. Steve, to you.
Yep, thanks, Madam Mayor. So I just, I was looking up the governance rules again, so there is, there's a clause now in the governance rules which effectively says, or does say, sorry, doesn't effectively say, says that the motion moved must not be substantially different to the motion published in the agenda, however, it may be amended by resolution of the council. So that was, I think that is difficult to achieve during the council meeting. The other thing I did want to point out, that, for example, if this motion was put and lost, a similar motion or a motion of the same type can't be put forward again under the governance rule for a period of time, I think it is three or six months, I can't remember the exact. So the other, which was what we touched on earlier, I think it mattered that you'd raised, Madam Mayor, in response to a question, the other strategy might be that the motion could be withdrawn and then further work is done internally to then bring something back at a later date if council was of view, that's one option, however, the other option is the matter just proceeds, and if it's lost, it wouldn't be able to be put back in the same similar form under the governance rules. There might be some work we can do looking at that in relation to how that matter might come back anyway to a briefing session, but just wanted to make you aware of that one.
So just to be clear, though, in, and we are doing this on the hop a little, irrespective of the outcome of this motion, we would still have the option to explore it at the briefing because that, we can put those things on briefing, and as I said, I'm happy, very happy to do that, and to work with the councillors in relation to what that looks like. The outcome of that would then be agreed by the group, and then we'd have a pathway forward in relation to it, but it just wouldn't have that formalisation of this process. Councillor Gibson, a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing is, if, if that happened, and I have no problem with that, but if that happened, if I'm getting it right, we couldn't bring that back to the chamber for three months.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I think your point was correct in response previously, that it could not be another notice of motion, however, if it was put to the vote and lost, it could be dealt with through another process, through a briefing.
Separate, separate process. It wouldn't come back in the same form, but hypothetically-
It could be a, a report.
Could be, you know, briefings, we ask lots of different things. So it, it could take any number of forms, I don't want to preempt what that potential form would be.
Oh, no, no, no.
It could look very, very different, yeah.
Yeah, so even if it had A, B, C, whatever, it could come back, but it wouldn't be a nom, it would be a report, and that wouldn't actually trigger-
That is my understanding, councillor Gibson, they're effectively treated as two different things, but there may be elements, as I think a number of people have spoken to, including councillor Ferguson, in relation to these, there are a number of things in this. There might be other things that also come in, that pick up from other conversations we've had tonight as well, and pathways to participation on a range of other things. So it might actually broaden, create a, a completely different conversation, which could look different in a number of ways. It wouldn't require us to do anything with it tonight, but there then would be a pathway, and I'm happy for the group to be having those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
But given councillor Ferguson's initiation of this, I'd be speaking to her first in relation to the pathway forward to get it into briefing as soon as possible, if that helps. Sorry, that was a bit of governance checking by the CEO, so is that-
Definitely, so the, the, one of the obligations I have when presented with a notice of motion, so if this was lost and another notice of motion was presented in an identical fashion, would be that I have to consider whether it's already been considered by council previously in the same or similar form, and then I have to reject it, so I was just making that point. It wouldn't be through another notice of motion mechanism if this was voted on and lost, another council couldn't put up a similar motion.
Okay, going to keep on moving through. Councillor Middlemiss did speak, didn't reserve, so we're right, so we're back to councillor Ferguson to close, unless there's anyone else who wanted to speak. Councillor Ferguson, apologies for the delays.
That's okay, I'm, I'm learning and I'm serving.
You and me both.
Okay, so to me, what, if you use your- Okay, so to me, what, if you use your emotional intelligence and listen to the people, they want to see us resolve things and get things through, get it fixed, get it reformed, get it working, get it effective, I think, in, it surprises me that we can't just put in a nomination and get a report and review it then and work together to make these things happen, I think the, the thing I don't understand is why we can't all support one another to move forward, and I can't see any point in dragging out processes more, complicating it, wrapping it up in bureaucracy, when this could just be quickly put through, get a report at the next meeting, have a look over it then, because it is important to review policies and procedures, I don't know anywhere where they don't review things, and I think that, well, I would think that the, the ratepayers would feel quite let down if they didn't think we were doing everything in our capacity to work better as a team and to work as a council for Latrobe City, so that's how I feel about this, and I'm passionate about this, and I'm disappointed that it wasn't supported tonight.
Thanks councillor Ferguson, councillors, we have had speakers, we will now put the motion to the vote, those in favour, councillor Harryman, councillor Gibson, yeah, councillor Ferguson, so make sure I don't miss you in that, councillor Middlemiss, those against, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Howe, and myself, the motion is lost, we'll do some more work on that one in briefing, councillors, we'll have some more conversations. Councillors, next on the agenda, I do note councillor Gibson is going to be leaving the room, I'm giving councillor Gibson some time to do that, we will take a break after ten two, councillors, just to let you know. I think we're clear. So ten one, councillors, this is the internal arbitration process for Latrobe City Council under section one four three of the Local Government Act 2020, it's commencing on page eleven of our councillor agenda, do I have a motion, please, councillors, councillor, sorry, councillor Middlemiss, I'm sorry, I was reading rather than looking.
Under the Local Government Act, are we obliged to receive the notice?
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss, we are required to, I don't want anyone to take my word for it.
The basis moving here, I'll move that the report, as required by the Local Government Act, received and lodged.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, Mr. CEO, can I just have you confirming, that's your understanding, I don't want anyone to be misled by my commentary.
No, that is correct, Madam Mayor, it is required to be tabled at the council meeting after it's received by ourselves at council, and so that's what's occurred tonight, so it's just for, as proposed resolution, receive and note the report.
Thank you, thank you councillor Middlemiss for moving, do I have a second, please, councillors, councillor Lund, have any opposition, councillor, oh, sorry, councillor Harryman, is that a fresh hand on opposition?
It's a fresh hand for noting, if I could, Madam Mayor, through you to the CEO, yep, just, I would ask that the CEO note in the minutes that I'm noting myself that there are incorrect statements and inferences attributed to me in this report, and I'd like that noted on the minutes, please.
Okay, councillor Harryman, can you just give me a moment so I can have that repeated back to you, the sound is okay, it's not great, Mr. CEO, I just want to check with governance, I don't want to get this wrong, do you want to just confirm for me, Mr. CEO, what it was that councillor Harryman was seeking to have done and how it's been noted for the minutes?
My notes that I've just quickly taken, Madam Mayor, with the CEO note that in the report itself there are incorrect statements and comments that have been attributed to councillor Harryman.
Inferences, Steve.
Inferences.
Inferences?
Statements and inferences, yep, thank you.
Inferences, thank you.
Comfortable with that, councillor Harryman?
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, so, sorry, just go back, we have a mover in councillor Middlemiss, we have a seconder in councillor Lund, did I have opposition councillor, I'm sorry, sorry, councillor Clancy.
Sorry, well councillor Harryman has mentioned that, I too just would like to note that, not that they're inference to me, but there are inaccuracies in the report, I found when I read it, and that it's not our report, we didn't write the report, but as I read back through it, I thought, I don't remember that being said or, or happening, but.
So councillors, I suppose.
Someone else's report, so if that can be noted as well.
Yeah, so from a custom and practice perspective, the issue around inaccuracy, we would normally note, normally they're our reports, so we could then adjust, we can't do that in this instance because it is an external report, as the councillors have explored, we're noting this report itself, I just want to check with the CEO and through you to the governance team, can we just agree a process in terms of, and I want to give every councillor the opportunity in relation to this who's participated at this point, I think that's fair, given where we're at, the mechanism, what we require from the councillors at this point, and the record in relation to the minutes?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, so as basically spelt it, I think it's on the screen for us to see, not the people who might be viewing online, so the obligation on councillors, once it receives the report from the internal arbiter, who's appointed through the principal conduct registrar by, effectively through Local Government Victoria, is once that report is tabled, and I think councillor Clancy pointed out, it's not actually our report, it's the report that they've prepared and provided, we're required to table that at the next council meeting for it to be received and noted by council, so the only thing that we can do is pick up on councillor Harryman's point and also councillor Clancy's, is make those notes and refer them, refer them back to Local Government Victoria, who prepared the report, at this stage, they see, as councillor Clancy said, it's not our report, they provided it to us on the basis that it's required by legislation to be tabled at this meeting and received and noted.
So councillor Clancy, you're comfortable and clear?
I am, and it could just be a transcribing thing from minutes of, you know, the meetings that were recorded, there were just, as I read through it, there's some spelling mistakes and different things in there, and I think that it's just worthwhile that this is the first time that we've seen it, because it wasn't brought to a briefing, it came in Thursday last week and published, so, you know, not our report, we didn't get a chance to give feedback on it, but.
Councillor Middlemiss?
A question, Madam Mayor, we are obliged to receive this report.
Correct.
And I have moved that we meet our legal obligation under the Local Government Act to do that, questions to you or through you to the CEO, are we allowed to add a rider to the motion that council notes the views of councillors Harryman and Clancy, that there may be some, I'll use any word we can think of, it may be some mistakes.
Variation of consistency.
Variations, variations in the report or mistakes in the report, are we allowed to add a rider like that, would that, I'm very conscious that what I've moved is the, our obligation, we can't escape, councillors, you've got no option.
Required.
But would adding a rider like that negate the legal obligation?
Happy for the CEO to respond, and then if not that, a foreshadow?
No, yep, if there were two parts to the motion, Madam Mayor, one was to receive and note the report as identified on our screens and in the agenda, and the second component that noted that there were some inaccuracies and provide that feedback or whatever, what was it, inferences and statements attributed to particular participants in the process and provide that back to the arbiter, I don't see that as compromising what's required by legislation.
Councillor Lund, you're the seconder?
Yes.
It's okay.
Did you second, would you accept a second part that council notes the views expressed by councillors Harryman and Clancy that, I need a word, help me with the word.
You think about the word, councillor Middlemiss can't do this without your grants, given you're the mover and the seconder.
I'd have your agreement to do this.
Second to add the additional element with just these notes that would then record them.
Um, council, council notes the views of councillors Harryman and Clancy that there may be, councillor Clancy, you're deputy mayor, help me.
Wordsmithing, here we go, where's my journalism degree?
Wordsmithing, I'm going to be man-deep. Verification. I waited all this time for a chance to talk about public toilets.
No.
And I'm going to need a public toilet if we don't take the right measure.
You're holding on to do that, I think it's worthwhile noting that, that it isn't our report, I think is probably what we're saying, is that councillor Harryman and councillor Clancy have noted that while this is not a Latrobe City Council report, it's been provided by Local Government Victoria.
They believe there are errors in the report.
Inaccuracies.
Inaccuracies is much better than.
Inaccuracies is probably where councillor Harryman's sitting, and mine were probably typos, but, yeah.
Councillor Lund, do you agree with that being added as a second clause?
Um, yes, I'll agree with that, can I add something, sorry, it doesn't change the outcome of the report though, that just.
We still know that councillor Middlemiss is just looking to create a pathway so that we can formalise that noting and tabling element, which we've done, and so that we can also add in a, I guess, a mechanism or a device to be able to acknowledge councillor Harryman's concerns around inferences and accuracy and councillor Clancy's raised points. And if it all gets around the room, and if anybody else has got anything, they can add those in too.
That's, yep.
Does that help?
The key is that part of it, we're obliged to do that by law, haven't got any option, and there are some concerns about inaccuracies, we're going to say, there it is, and the CEO can pass that on to the Local Government Department if necessary.
Thank you, do you need to check in terms of governance words and everything else? Mr. CEO, you comfortable?
Just screwing something.
Just getting some words added, do you want to take a minute?
Yep.
CEO, we'll just, you want a break?
Yes.
Okay, councillors, we're going to take five minutes, we need some time to work this through, apologies for those on the screen, you're going to see the blank screen with the holding pattern, go grab a cup of tea, we will be back shortly, can someone also advise councillor Gibson that we've taken in a German, please, thanks councillors, it'll be five, but five to seven, it could be ten, we'll see you soon, thanks everyone. Thank you for joining us, uh, once again. Uh, we did have an adjournment so we could attend, uh, to a matter of consideration in relation to item ten point one. Before we move on, I'd like to acknowledge councillor Gibson. Um, will be an apology for the remainder of the meeting and we will continue to move through. We will attend to this item. We have some additional, um, points in relation to ten one. There's an item two and three, which notes of use in relation to councillor Harriman's previous conversation. Councillor Clancy has also highlighted some matters as well. Um, councillors Harriman and Clancy, can I just check with you in relation to level of comfort in terms of the words? And whether they're reflected of what it was we discussed before the break? Councillor Harriman, maybe you first?
Yep, happy with that, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy?
Thank you.
Okay, we're good. Was there anyone else that needed anything in addition to that? No? Okay. So on that basis, it's been accepted by the mover and the seconder, I believe. Can I just get confirmation of that? Councillor Middlemiss is happy, councillor Lund is happy. All right. I think we're good to go. We didn't have opposition at that point, so we did have a mover and a seconder. Do we have any opposition councillors? No. Do we have any councillors that wish to speak? No councillors wishing to speak, no opposition on this one. It is carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. I'll keep moving through. Um, item ten two, I won't be allowing debate or discussion. This is purely a placeholder in terms of the agenda. I'm going to hand, uh, directly to councillor Ferguson.
Thank you. Um, ten point two, I acknowledge paragraph fifty-five of the councillor conduct panel findings of thirty-first to August twenty twenty-two and apologise for my conduct at the council meeting, second of August twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Continuing to move through, I'm now moving on to item twelve one. This is a petition of support for a new public toilet on the north side of Mall Activity Centre. This commences on page thirty-eight of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I have an alternate motion.
Councillor Middlemiss has an alternate. Councillors, you have that available as a hard copy on your tables? Yes. Happy to second councillor Howe. So on the basis of that, I give the rest of the councillors the opportunity to read. This is twelve one. It is an alt. You're moving councillor Middlemiss, seconding councillor Howe. Based on that alt, do I have any opposition councillors? No? Councillor Middlemiss?
Thank you, madam mayor.
Do you want to speak to this, do? Joking.
I've waited all night to speak to this. Um, there was a petition and as you've heard from the head petitioner, um, there is some concern amongst what I'll call the community on the, uh, north side of the Mall Activity Centre around, um, what they perceive as a lack of public toilets in that area. Uh, the council officers have reviewed, um, the petition and based on current policies, they have arrived at the view that there is sufficient supply and access, access to toilets within the Mall Activity Centre. And therefore, um, the situation is okay at the moment. On that basis, we have not made in the, uh, draft budget, we've not made any allowance for an additional public toilet in that area. However, councillors, um, as a ward councillor, I have a view that a case can be made for a, a, a new, a new toilet over in that area. And to back up what Mister Hollis said, um, I took a retired, uh, colleague for a coffee. Uh, and we're sitting in Church Street, uh, there having a coffee. I'd driven him down and he said to me, can you take me home? I need to go to the toilet. And I pointed across to the Commercial Road toilets, which is some considerable distance away. And I said, where are you going? And he said, no, I couldn't get there. Take me home. So, uh, the case that Mister Hollis put to us, um, I actually completely agree with him. So what I have suggested in this motion is council officers are doing a draft public toilet plan for the entire, uh, city of Latrobe. And I believe we should, um, put this matter back to be considered in that draft public toilet plan. It may be that the draft public toilet plan comes up with distances between toilets, et cetera. And this may be needed, uh, or maybe a case can be made there for it. And it gives another chance for the public to have some input into it. So effectively, this motion is saying, yes, we receive your petition. The view at the moment is that it's not needed. However, we will reconsider the matter in the draft public toilet plan, which will become public, uh, in about four or five months' time, I understand. So, uh, that's where it is. I'm suggesting that this is a way forward on this matter and I recommend it to council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Howe, reserve or speak?
Oh, very briefly speak, there's not a lot to talk about toilets. Um, happy to second this because we get the same sort of complaints in Trelgany. Um, not only about the locations where our public toilets are, but also the, the level of cleanliness. So, um, I'm looking forward to this report where, where we will be reviewing, um, not only, um, the locations and the standards, um, and any other issues that our, that our community have with the toilets. Um, so I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillors, any further speakers on this one? Councillor Lund?
Just very quickly, I don't want to drag this out, but, um, I'm too very happy to support this and I thank, um, councillor Middlemiss for his alt on this. Um, I'm on the ground on a daily basis and I can tell you, um, that almost every day we are asked for, um, access to a toilet and we're not able to provide that. Um, and quite often it's people that have challenges around their mobility and around, um, and barriers around accessing certain parts of our community anyway. Um, those people are quite vulnerable and I think we do need to, um, look at this in the broader picture of our toilet, public toilet plan in Latrobe City, um, with, um, taking into considerations that access around vulnerability as well. So thank you councillor Middlemiss.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillor Harriman?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just very quickly, there's six disability services on the north side of the railway line in Mall. A number of those have contacted me to, to come out in support of the petition. Um, and I just hope it's taken into consideration when the draft public toilet plan is done, that we're aware that not everybody has full mobility, that not everybody has control over when they need to go, um, and that a lot of people are faced with not being able to travel across the railway line through the viaduct for various reasons. So I just hope that that's taken into consideration and we look at the availability of disabled access toilets when we take this into consideration. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one? No, we didn't have any opposition, so there isn't the opportunity to close. Councillor Middlemiss, I'm terribly sorry. I know you've been waiting a very long time to speak to this one tonight. But we have had speakers, so we'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Um, I'm going to, uh, seek your indulgence councillors. I know I can, but I'd rather do it, uh, with your, um, consent and commitment. Am I going to move some of these agenda items around so that our gallery can actually go home at some point? They've been very patient with us. Um, if there isn't any particular objection to that, we'll start moving them through in a slightly different order. Um, I'd suggest, uh, first up, we'll bring four point fourteen point two. This is a former Budgeri Primary School heritage status, noting you councillor Ferguson. We're going to bring up fourteen two and, um, move that one up so that some of that, and then we will go to fourteen three. That helps and that'll get those two moved through. Councillor Ferguson, I noted you, uh, moving?
Yes, please, I'd like to move this.
Fantastic. Councillor Ferguson is our mover. Do I have a second? Councillor Lund, seconding, do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Ferguson, back to you.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important that we look at the new information that's arisen in the independent peer review. Um, it's quite obvious that there's more factors that need consideration and therefore I'd like to see this go back to Heritage Victoria for a reassessment, um, for the Budgeri community. The school means a lot and I can't see any harm in doing this. And I think if we have this information in our hands, then I feel that we should be doing so. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ferguson. Councillor Lund?
Sorry, um, just keeping it short and sweet. I agree wholeheartedly with you councillor Ferguson. I think it does need to go back for a review and I look forward to seeing what the results are.
Thank you councillor Lund. Any other councillors we should speak on this one? Councillor Law?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, wholeheartedly agree, uh, about sending the report back. But I also note, um, that, that the condition of the hall is in a, what would you say, probably average state that probably needs some type of remedial work. And if this is going to take, if it does take four or five years to come back, you know, the hall or outer buildings may be in a state that, uh, it's beyond salvage. So we may, as a council group, as we move forward, have to look at how we could incorporate something in the budget process down the track to help, um, with this at some point in time. But that will be, you know, be a consideration of budget at some point in time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Law. Any other councillors we should speak? No speak, no further speakers. We had no opposition, but because we've had speakers, we need to put this one to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it is carried unanimously. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, you missed last two, last two votes you've missed.
Oh, councillor Harriman, I'm so sorry!
Yep.
I'm going to redo that vote and that was all on me. I was looking up, not down. Councillors, we'll go to the vote again. Sorry, just for the fullness of the record, because I vaged out on councillor Harriman then. Councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, who I was going to first previously, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself. That is carried unanimously. Thank you to the officers for your patience. That was fourteen two. We're going to jump now to fourteen three. I noted, um, just for fullness, it's been quite a while since we did it. We had some declarations of interest, no conflict, which were just there on record, but it doesn't require any of the councillors to leave the room in relation to that. Um, fourteen three, councillor Middlemiss?
Uh, madam mayor, could I, uh, move an alternate motion, please? And for the benefit of councillors who've studied the alternate motion and can't work out what the difference is, uh, it relates to paragraph or clause seven of the recommendation. And the original recommendation was that all quar-, uh, that all trucks, uh, taking product from, uh, the quarry would travel along a certain route. Uh, it has been, excuse me, has been reworded, uh, that, uh, the trucks, the empty trucks returning travel along the same route.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Do we have a second? Councillor? Oh, sorry, councillor Harriman, you're going to have to just keep. Steve's going to spot you for this point, councillor Harriman. For some reason, I just keep looking at the wrong spot. Yeah, we need to actually sit you at a seat, I think. We're going to pick the monitor up and move you to a seat. Councillor Harriman is my second. Thank you very much. Do we have any opposition councillors? There's no opposition, councillor Middlemiss, back to you to speak your amendment.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm looking across at a lady who told me that she could not hear me.
Oh, I could hear you.
Thank you very much. I will put that problem down to me failing to turn the microphone on, I suggest.
It's my fault. I'm the microphone man tonight.
My operator, yes, is the problem. What we have before us is a proposal to extend, uh, quarrying. Uh, I know it's in some reports it's called sand mining now. Uh, extend the large deposit which is
Petition and based on current policies, they have arrived at the view that there is sufficient supply and access to toilets within the Mall Activity Centre. And therefore, um, the situation is okay at the moment. On that basis, we have not made in the draft budget, we've not made any allowance for an additional public toilet in that area. However, councillors, um, as a ward councillor, I have a view that a case can be made for a new toilet over in that area. And to back up what Mr Hollis said, um, I took a retired colleague for a coffee. Uh, and we're sitting in Church Street, uh, there having a coffee. I'd driven him down and he said to me, can you take me home? I need to go to the toilet. And I pointed across to the Commercial Road toilets, which is some considerable distance away. And I said, where are you going? And he said, no, I couldn't get there. Take me home. So, uh, the case that Mr Hollis put to us, um, I actually completely agree with him. So what I have suggested in this motion is council officers are doing a draft public toilet plan for the entire city of Latrobe. And I believe we should, um, put this matter back to be considered in that draft public toilet plan. It may be that the draft public toilet plan comes up with distances between toilets, et cetera, and this may be needed, uh, or maybe a case can be made there for it and it gives another chance for the public to have some input into it. So effectively, this motion is saying, yes, we receive your petition. The view at the moment is that it's not needed. However, we will reconsider the matter in the draft public toilet plan, which will become public, uh, in about four or five months' time, I understand. So, uh, that's where it is. I'm suggesting that this is a way forward on this matter and I recommend it to council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, Middlemiss councillor Howe, reserve or speak?
Oh, very briefly speak, there's not a lot to talk about toilets. Um, happy to second this because we get the same sort of complaints in Trelawgan. Um, not only about the locations where our public toilets are, but also the level of cleanliness. So, um, I'm looking forward to this report where we will be reviewing, um, not only, um, the locations and the standards, um, and any other issues that our, that our community have with the toilets. Um, so I'm happy to support, um, thank you.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillors, any further speakers on this one? Councillor Lund?
Just very quickly, I don't want to drag this out, but, um, I'm too very happy to support this and I thank councillor Middlemiss for his ult on this. Um, I'm on the ground on a daily basis and I can tell you, um, that almost every day we are asked for, um, access to a toilet and we're not able to provide that. Um, and quite often it's people that have challenges around their mobility and around, um, and barriers around accessing certain parts of our community anyway. Um, those people are quite vulnerable and I think we do need to, um, look at this in the broader picture of our toilet, public toilet plan in Latrobe City, um, with, um, taking into considerations that access around vulnerability as well. So, thank you councillor Middlemiss.
Thank you councillor Lund, councillor Harriman.
Thank you, madam mayor. Just very quickly, there's six disability services on the north side of the railway line in Malle. A number of those have contacted me to, to come out in support of the petition. Um, and I just hope it's taken into consideration when the draft public toilet plan is done, that we're aware that not everybody has full mobility, that not everybody has control over when they need to go, um, and that a lot of people are faced with not being able to travel across the railway line through the viaduct for various reasons. So I just hope that that's taken into consideration and we look at the availability of disabled access toilets when we take this into consideration. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one? No, we didn't have any opposition, so there isn't the opportunity to close councillor Middlemiss. I'm terribly sorry, I know you've been waiting a very long time to speak to this one tonight. But we have had speakers, so we'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Um, I'm going to, uh, seek your indulgence councillors, I know I can, but I'd rather do it, uh, with your consent and commitment. Are we going to move some of these agenda items around so that our gallery can actually go home at some point? They've been very patient with us. Um, if there isn't any particular objection to that, we'll start moving them through in a slightly different order. Um, I'd suggest first up, we'll bring four point, fourteen point two. This is a former Budgeri Primary School heritage status, noting you councillor Ferguson. We're going to bring up fourteen two and, um, move that one up so that some of that, and then we will go to fourteen three. That helps and that'll get those two moved through. Councillor Ferguson, I noted you, uh, moving?
Yes, please, I'd like to move this.
Fantastic. Councillor Ferguson is our mover. Do I have a second up? Councillor Lund, seconding, do I have any opposition? No opposition, councillor Ferguson, back to you.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important that we look at the new information that's arisen in the independent peer review. Um, it's quite obvious that there's more factors that need consideration and therefore I'd like to see this go back to Heritage Victoria for a reassessment, um, for the Budgeri community. The school means a lot and I can't see any harm in doing this and I think if we have this information in our hands, then I feel that we should be doing so. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ferguson. Councillor Lund?
Sorry, um, just keeping it short and sweet, I agree wholeheartedly with you councillor Ferguson, I think it does need to go back for a review and I look forward to seeing what the results are.
Thank you councillor Lund. Any other councillor we should speak on this one? Councillor Law?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, wholeheartedly agree about sending the report back, but I also note, um, that, that the condition of the hall is in a, what would you say, probably average state that probably needs some type of remedial work. And if this is going to take, if it does take four or five years to come back, you know, the hall or outer buildings may be in a state that, uh, it's beyond salvage. So we may, as a council group, as we move forward, have to look at how we could incorporate something in the budget process down the track to help, um, with this at some point in time, but that will be, you know, be a consideration of budget at some point in time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Law. Any other councillors we should speak? No speak, no further speakers, we had no opposition, but because we've had speakers, we need to put this one to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it is carried unanimously.
Madam mayor, you missed, last two, last two votes you've missed.
Oh, councillor Harriman, I'm so sorry!
Yep, you might want to-
I'm going to redo that vote and it was all on me, I was looking up, not down. Councillors, we'll go to the vote again, sorry, just for the fullness of the record because I vaged out on councillor Harriman then. Councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, who I was going to first previously, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, that is carried unanimously. Thank you to the officers for your patience. That was fourteen two, we're going to jump now to fourteen three. I noted, um, just for fullness, it's been quite a while since we did it, we had some declarations of interest, no conflict, which were just there on record, but it doesn't require any of the councillors to leave the room in relation to that. Um, fourteen three councillor Middlemiss?
Uh, madam mayor, could I, uh, move an alternate motion please? And for the benefit of councillors who've studied the alternate motion and can't work out what the difference is, uh, it relates to paragraph or clause seven of the recommendation. And the original recommendation was that all, uh, that all trucks, uh, taking product from, uh, the quarry would travel along a certain route. Uh, it had been, excuse me, has been reworded, uh, that, uh, the trucks, the empty trucks returning travel along the same route.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, do we have a second up?
Happy to second, madam mayor.
Oh, sorry councillor Harriman, you're going to have to keep, Steve's going to spot you for this point councillor Harriman, for some reason I just keep looking at the wrong spot. Yeah, we need to actually sit you at a seat, I think, we're going to pick the monitor up and move you to a seat. Councillor Harriman is my second up, thank you very much. Do we have any opposition councillors? There's no opposition councillor Middlemiss, back to you to speak your amendment.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm looking across at a lady who told me that she could not hear me.
Oh, I can hear you.
Thank you very much. I will put that problem down to me failing to turn the microphone on, I suggest.
It's my fault, I'm the microphone man tonight, sorry.
My operator, yeah, there's a problem. What we have before us is a proposal to extend, uh, quarrying, uh, I notice in some reports it's called sand mining now, uh, extend the large deposit which is in the, um, APM mill, um, odour zone, uh, up on, uh, Troggen West Road. Uh, one side of the road, that is the river side of the road, will be worked out in the next four or five years. And if sand quarrying is to continue, it will be on the southern side of the road and this is where it requires a planning permit. There has been quite a lot of, um, objection and concern, uh, raised by members of the community within, uh, um, they're within a K or two of the proposal. And there is, attached to, uh, this motion, there is an extensive report, which is in the agenda, which addresses all the concerns raised by the objectors and proposes an extensive range of conditions to reduce community impact. Perhaps not concentrated in one paragraph in the report, but very important, I think, to note is that the operation of the quarry will be closely regulated by a range of Victorian government authorities. Dust and noise emissions, sewage, stockpile control, et cetera, will come under the control of the Environment Protection Authority. Access to public roads will come under the control of the Department of Transport. Quarry operations will come under the control of the Mineral Resources Division of the Department of Jobs, Precincts and Regions, through their earth resources regulations and the regulator. Enforcement of planning conditions will be by this, if passed, by Latrobe City. And safety, the actual operational safety, will still come under WorkSafe Victoria. So we're not looking at some cowboy operation, but one that will be closely overseen by government authorities and which these authorities are available to the members of the public to raise any concerns, particularly affected, um, community members. And I'll just touch briefly on the economic benefit to us. It is an extension of an existing operation, there will be an increase in the number of jobs, but looking downstream, you can see that there are many, many jobs in Victoria dependent on the particular product that comes out of this, uh, this deposit. I note particularly the concerns raised by the possibility of silicosis impacting residents close to the site. I understand these concerns, which have largely arisen from publicity around the kitchen fit-out industry. Cutting stone and concrete benchtops in confined spaces has increased the rate of silicosis, or dramatically, it's gone from zero to quite a few, by the workers in that industry. Council has had an independent consultant review, uh, points related to this and looked at the quarry operation and concluded that the operation of the quarry is very like damp sand, almost damp beach sand when it's dug out.
Councillor Middlemiss, can I extend you by another three?
Oh, sorry, madam mayor, I wasn't looking at the clock.
No, no, it's only just rolled, it's all right councillor Harriman, we don't need it anymore, we changed those rules, so I'm just able to let him pass through.
Thank you, madam mayor.
We're all good, another three councillor.
So we're talking about conditions where there will be very little dust. So, uh, this proposal brings economic, um, shall we say, development to our area. People will say it's a small number of increase in jobs, but we need jobs desperately. And I believe every concern has been addressed. I think the community can be, um, very comfortable that everything has been addressed. And on a personal note, uh, you know, everybody knows I've been affiliated with the union movement over many years and I had a particular concern, I'm very conscious of dust-related industrial diseases. Um, just for the record, my father died of asbestos, my grandfather died of silicosis, he was an underground quartz miner. But I wouldn't put this proposal forward if I had any concerns around the silicosis issue. I do not see any danger in the proposed operation and I would recommend that, uh, councillors approve the amended, uh, proposal, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Harriman, you're our second up, speak or reserve?
Uh, speak, thanks, madam mayor.
Great, thank you.
No, thanks, madam mayor, I'd just like to congratulate, uh, councillor Middlemiss on the minor change you made, I think it'll have a huge positive impact on the people, uh, living on that road. I think it's a great, a great change and I think it's a positive one. Um, I think councillor Middlemiss has covered a lot of it, I think this has been a well-run sand mining operational quarry as councillor Middlemiss and I probably know it as. Um, it's been well-run in the past, it's taking it further away from residential areas, it's proposing to create more jobs, which I think sends a message to a lot of businesses throughout Victoria and Australia that, um, well-considered proponents coming to us with no plan, um, will get the support of council. And I think that's really, really important when we're facing a tsunami of lost jobs coming up, that we send that message out to the business community, that if they come to us, we're willing to work with them so long as their proposals are well-thought-out, well-considered and, and will have a positive impact on the, uh, community. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman. Uh, councillors, anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Howe?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, resolutions such, such like this are always difficult to decide because we're balancing our future economic prosperity on one side, um, with jobs and we've, we've got the, uh, the community's, um, concerns, health and wellbeing on the other side. Um, this quarry, uh, the new quarry is to support and complement the, the applicants' existing quarry operation. I'll, um, just run through a couple of the details that are in there, the main ones. Uh, it's in a farming, farming zone, schedule one area. The total works authority area is going to be approximately a hundred and fifty-six hectares with the total extraction area, um, a hundred and forty-four hectares. Um, they're saying the maximum disturbed area at any one time will be approximately sixty hectares. Um, the proposed hours of operation are Monday to Friday, seven AM to six PM, Saturday, seven AM to one PM, um, closed on Sundays and public holidays. All the truck movements now will be, we, um, occur via the west, via the industrial and rural areas, so no residential areas. Um, and they're going to be progressively rehabilitating the site as they move through the mine. They did have forty-one objections lodged against the application. I won't go through all the, all the themes, there was about a half a dozen themes, but all these concerns have been addressed by our, um, planning staff. As councillor Middlemiss said, the application has been referred to the Department of Transport, DJPR and the Latrobe Regional Airport Board, um, and have received all, all ticks of approval. Um, internally, we have gone to our engineering department, strategic planning, environment and health teams. The engineer and environment health teams provided conditional consent to granting of the, of the planning permit. This proposal has been considered by our officers against the relevant provisions of our planning scheme and is considered that the proposal is generally consistent with the relevant objectives and decision guidelines of the scheme. Uh, there's, there is twenty-five conditions there that must be met to ensure a safe workplace, uh, no disturbance to any of the neighbouring communities and the site will be rehabilitated at the completion of the mining. So very happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Clancy?
Thanks, madam mayor. Um, only to say that, that there's been a, um, a large consultation, councillor Howe just talked about the objections that came through, forty-one objections and, and certainly to the people and the community members who, uh, took time to, um, to write their objections. It's, it is a very, um, uh, it's a long process and sometimes when you don't sit within local government, you don't understand planning, um, it, it can be a challenging process and, and councillor Middlemiss talked about that as well as the, uh, not just the, the, the process of all the, uh, um, issues being addressed, but I suppose I wanted to, to, a quick shout out to the people who have gone through a process of contacting us, whether in support or, or in opposition to it. Those, um, emails, those phone calls, those letters, they don't go unnoticed and, uh, I suppose I wanted to, to just say that that is the, the way that council operates and we do operate in a democratic process where people can contact us and we do have differing views on things across our community. Um, but, but I'm certainly very happy with the, um, the conditions that have been put on, the twenty-five conditions that have been put on and I'm happy to support this, this evening, uh, and see this go through. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clancy, any other councillor we should speak? We didn't have, sorry, was that a hand? No, now I'm seeing hands that aren't there. Goodness, it must be getting late. Sorry councillors, just saying to one of my colleagues before, very sorry, the timing's been a bit off on this and we've got important things we need to consider, but, um, yeah, we're a bit, uh, late into the agenda. We have not had any opposition on this one, so we don't have a close option for you councillor Middlemiss, but we have had speaker, so we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? I gave you the extra three minutes.
Well, I'm happy with you, madam mayor.
Oh, I'm sure you would, maybe afterwards you could all sit, no doubt. Councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, thank you for the great big hand, it made it much easier, thank you. Councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it's carried unanimously, thanks so much. That was the alternate for fourteen three. Thank you so much, I'm just going to allow our, um, gallery to leave if they so wish. Nothing worse than that awkward moment where they want to- You can stay for the whole lot if you like. You've been very patient with us, thank you. Um, sorry, we have moved around a bit, some of that was completely my doing, you have my apologies and hope you find something good on TV. Tune in online, yeah, that's what they're going to do on the way home, tune in online, I don't think so. Um, councillors, just by way of ref- refresh, and I, I do apologise, I know I've moved around a little bit tonight and slowed us on a few things and not my intention to cause any disruption, but just to make sure that we're thorough. And we can get on to a range of other things that we also need to be working on together, which brings us back to thirteen one. So this is a presentation of the Audit and Risk Committee minutes for the third of March. Uh, do I have a mover? Councillor Law? Do I have a second up? Councillor Ferguson is our second up. Do I have any opposition? Can't imagine so. No, councillor Law, did you want to speak to this one?
Yes, I'd better speak to this one because I spent half a day there, so, it was, it was a good day of training. So, no, no, uh, to be honest, it was a, uh, an enlightenment into the other side of the business that actually looks at, um, all the risks that we, we actually have, both financial and also as a management structure. Um, there's about twenty-odd reports that are brought back to the Finance and Risk Committee, uh, they're all documented in, uh, our report here, I won't go through them all, only to note that there's a, there's probably, um, from a financial point of view, we're, we're in a very good position and, uh, that's probably the most important, uh, part to our rate payers. Uh, other couple of things that, uh, where costs will be, um, probably going to be a ver- uh, uh, an issue as we move forward and that is on, uh, the waste management system, which is a massive cost to, uh, the organisation as we move forward. And the other one that they did highlight and a report was brought back on it and we are dealing with it is cyber security, which is probably the biggest risk to any organisation of this type of size if something does go wrong. So, but, uh, the Audit and Risk Committee, um, gave us a, a very good report and I can only look forward to the next one. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Law, councillor Ferguson, did you wish to speak or reserve? Any other councillor wish to speak in relation to this one? Okay, we heard no opposition, we did have a speaker, we'll have to put it to the vote. Those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Councillors, Mr Piasanti, we're about to hit nine o'clock, do we have to move an extension beyond that nine? I can't remember anymore. Yep, do you want to check? Governance team were sort of looking over, over the top of councillor Middlemiss, I believe we may need to extend after nine? Or is it custom and practice and I've forgotten what we need to, we do, yes, sorry, okay. Councillor Middlemiss is moving an extension of our meeting times, councillor Lund is seconding that, I'd take it we don't have any opposition because otherwise we are coming back tomorrow night. Yep, okay, we'll take those carried unanimously, thank you very much councillors, sorry? You want speakers to it? Yeah, you're that kid in the room. Okay, councillors, we're now moving on to thirteen two, this is a review of council delegations commencing on page sixty-three of your agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Howe, do I have a second up? Anybody, anybody? Councillor Lund, any opposition? Any speakers?
I'll just briefly speak, madam mayor. Um, to ensure that, uh, the council operates effectively and we use our, the best use of our resources, we delegate many of its, of its powers, duties and functions to the CEO and to the appropriate offices. This is done via the instrument of delegation to the CEO and to the instrument of delegation to members of our council staff. As legislation and council policy changes, it's important to review them and make the appropriate changes, which is what we're looking at here tonight. Um, in this report, it shows that there's no changes to the instrument of delegation to the CEO, uh, the instrument of delegation, members of staff of several proposed changes which are listed in the report. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe, councillor Lund? Any other councillor wish to speak to this one? Don't need to close, but we do need to put it to the vote. Those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it is carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Round to thirteen three, this is the council policy review for the privacy policy, this starts on page seventy-two of your agenda, do I have a motion councillors? Councillor Clancy's a mover, councillor Ferguson is our second up. Have any opposition? No opposition, do I have any speakers?
Ever so briefly, um, this is a renewed, uh, policy, this has been, a reviewed policy, um, that has been updated since the two thousand and sixteen policy is a part of our ongoing updating and reviewing of policies as we do throughout the organisation. Um, this updates the, uh, to the two thousand and twenty-two policy. Um, what we will be doing once, uh, in the, in the event that this is passed, um, it will rescind all, or revoke all previous versions and be available on the council website and all council service centres as well. If people are interested in the privacy policy that council as an organisation adopts, uh, to ensure that we are with best practice.
Thank you councillor Clancy, councillor Ferguson, did you wish to speak to this one? Councillors, anyone else wish to speak? No speaker, uh, sorry, no close, but we have had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, that one's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Now moving on to fourteen one, this is fence dog parks trial review and future commencing on page ninety-seven. Councillor Lund, I note you, moving? Thank you, do I have a second up councillor Howe? Have any opposition? No opposition, more ready to you councillor Lund, if you would like to speak?
I would, thank you, madam mayor. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the officers of, who have worked on this report, the feedback around engagement and addressing questions as they arise from community members who regularly use a dog park has been overwhelmingly positive, so I thank you all for your responses and your support. Um, off-leash fenced dog parks have many benefits for dogs and their owners, they provide opportunities for dogs to exercise and socialise with other dogs and they also provide benefits for dog owners, a local place to connect with others, they get owners out and about in the community, they encourage and support community connections and there are many health and wellbeing benefits to supporting dogs and their owners with a fenced park. We've now done the work and the trial has identified the need for a fenced dog park, the health and wellbeing benefits, um, of having one and the community expectation that we now need to work towards pursuing future funds to establish a bigger and a more permanent location for one somewhere in Latrobe. It makes perfect sense that we now pursue the opportunities that we may have to be included in the state government new dog park programme. While we do this, it is important that the existing dog park remains and we endorse the guidelines that, uh, that will support this dog park and any fenced dog park that we may construct into the future.
Thank you councillor Lund, councillor Howe, you with the second up?
Oh, it's all been said, I think, madam mayor, can't top that.
No, is anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Clancy?
Ever so briefly, excuse me, madam mayor, it was, uh, in, uh, two thousand and eighteen, in June two thousand and eighteen, that, that the, uh, the council adopted a position to run a trial dog park. Feels like it was ten years ago, but it was only, um, was that four years ago? Yes, here we go, almost four years ago.
Maybe that's ten dog years.
Maybe it is, in, in dog years, that is a lot bigger. Um, and I remember at the time, um, having, um, some reservations about adopting that and I think at the time, even though I supported, um, and I think I voted to, to go ahead with the trial, I did speak in opposition to it, or, or sort of with, with caution around it. But, um, I'm always happy to be proven wrong and after the trial has been going since January two thousand and nineteen, it seems to be an overwhelming success, uh, and hence this is, this, um, as councillor Lund has spoken about, moves forward to, um, to adopt a, a policy that we have now to, um, uh, the draft, um, fenced dog park guidelines as well as endorse the retention of the existing dog park that we have. So, um, lots of options for dog parks all the way around the city and hopefully the trial that we, uh, endorsed back in June two thousand and eighteen, um, will be seen as something that we were able to do in other areas around the city. So this is, um, this is a really good step forward and, and the doggos are happy and the owners are happy as well.
Thanks councillor Clancy, anyone else wish to speak to this one? We didn't have any opposition, so we don't need to close, we did have speakers, we need to put it to the vote. Those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe- councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe, and my, I'm going to call my own name, good lord. It's getting late. And myself, it is carried unanimously. Thank you for your patience councillors. We're on to, we're skipping, we've already done fourteen-two and fourteen-three, for those following along in a straight line on the agenda. That brings us into fourteen-four, which is the proposed amendment. C one thirty-seven, Moll Activity Centre Plan, this commences on page twenty-eight. Councillor Middlemiss is hovering over the button on the mic. Councillor Middlemiss?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Have a second, councillors? More Activity Centre, thank you councillor Ferguson, have any opposition? Councillor Middlemiss, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is now some years since we had, or since council adopted in principle the future Moll Plan, and it's time to step back and have another look at it. And our planning team has spent many months in preparing a Moll Activity Centre Plan, which takes the future Moll Plan, adds some detail to it and modifies it where circumstances have changed. It's an extensive body of work, as councillors would have noted if they've read it. Having said, excuse me, having said that, I have some reservations about it. But really, if I, if I was to vote against it, I'd be throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Like, for instance, this report recommends that McDonald Street, Maryville Road, be narrowed for its length to single lane rather than double lane. I'm opposed to that. It says that the turning, the sheltered turning sections into two of the roads off Prince's Drive should be removed. Again, I don't think that'll work. It doesn't put enough emphasis on our proposal for cycling and walking tracks to join in the CBDs, in this case in the Moll CBD, because that will bring benefits, people riding in there. But these are tiny little nitpicks. If you read this report, it is massive, and it is an excellent body of work. And those items I agree with, I'll fight them on the day. Let me make it very clear, I commend the officers for, for this body of work. It brings us in line with Trelgan, we completed the Trelgan Activity Centre Plan some time ago. It's, it's a great body of work, it sets out perhaps where the centre of Moll and its surrounding areas should go. You know, looking at it, it, it's amazing how people do an enormous amount of work, and then the next day it can change, like there's now talk of a Commonwealth Games village. Now, the planners didn't consider that in this proposal, because that wasn't on the, wasn't on the books. It's, it's appeared after this report, and my first reaction was, gee, that underdeveloped section just directly opposite the railway station. But we could keep on holding this report back and amending it and amending it and amending it. It's, the thing is to take it, to compliment the officers on what they've done, and address issues as they change going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Ferguson, would you like to speak to this one?
I think Graham's pretty much got that wrapped up there, so.
Councillors, anyone else like to speak to this one? Councillor Lund?
Just briefly, I'd like to extend my gratitude to the officers and everybody that has worked on this report over such a long, extensive period of time. I think it is a significant body of work, and we're really putting our best foot forward in Moll Well, so thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Lund, anyone else wish to speak to this? Nope, we've got no opposition, we have had speakers, we'll need to put this one to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, it's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Now, we're moving into fifteen-one. You would have noticed at the start of the meeting, some of our councillors had declared interests in relation to this. The officers have split out this report into multiple sections, which allows the councillors to participate in those areas where they do not have a conflict, but also allows them to leave the room so we can consider those areas where they do. So those councillors who have noted that know where they sit in relation to each of those elements, and it will allow us to make our way through. Having said all that, I know the governance team will watch this one closely to make sure that I get it all right, so that everybody gets their funding that they've requested. Going to say, you used to first up. So I don't need to explain in any more detail of the gallery, I think we're pretty gorge. So I just want to confirm those items of conflict. I had one for councillor Harryman, one for councillor Howe, one for councillor Clancy. We will separate it into parts one and four, and then we will debate and vote separately on parts five and six. Does that cover everybody else? You're five? Councillor Harryman, you're clear where you sit? You're on five as well? And you're on six. Okay, so councillors, we're looking at items one and one to four. Do I have a mover for a motion? Councillor Howe with councillor Middlemiss as a second? Have any opposition to that? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Howe?
Yes, I'll speak briefly, thanks, Madam Mayor. Our grants, grant system, twice a year we have a community grant program where clubs and other bodies can apply for a grant under the various streams that we have. So there, we've got minor capital works, minor equipment, community wellbeing, community events minor, and community events significant. This helps groups maintain and upgrade their equipment, and also assist with the cost of running events, et cetera. I think it's a fantastic program, and I encourage all groups out there to have a look at it and see if there's something in it for them. I'll just talk about some of the numbers for this round. Our total budget for the community grants program for the year is five hundred and fourteen thousand. We've had a total of one hundred and sixteen applications this time round, with seventy-three being recommended for funding. The total budget for round two of the community grants program is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and twenty thousand for the community sponsorship program. This report goes into great detail of, of where it's all going, if anybody's interested. The total funding recommendations for the community grants program is three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents, and twenty thousand dollars for the community sponsorship program. Included in this is also a sponsorship request from Federation University for the Federation University Gippsland Business Awards, the three thousand, three hundred, oh, sorry.
Ravi, didn't?
That's, sorry, that's the last one. Yeah, sorry, I'm finished.
Thank you councillor Howe. No, that's fine, councillor Middlemiss?
I've been looking sideways at the extensive speech that's been prepared by councillor Howe, I don't think there's a thing I can add.
Oh, fair enough. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak to these? No, what was I going to say? Set, set the bar. Councillors, we don't have any opposition, but we have had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. This is items one to four. Councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, sorry, these are theirs in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself. That one's carried unanimously. Now councillors, Howe and Harryman will temporarily leave the meeting while we now turn to part five. I know, there's a song in that somewhere.
He has left the building, Madam Mayor, so moved.
Do them rather rapidly. Councillor Middlemiss is my mover. Oh, everybody's a second. Councillor Law is a second, are any opposition? Nope. Anyone wish to speak?
I'll just check his speech, in case he missed anything. Now, apart from the Federation University, one I think is pretty right.
We're pretty covered on that basis. I think we'll consider that one carried unanimously. Thank you councillors, we will retrieve our colleagues and then we will swap out for councillor Clancy, he's going to leave. And then we'll let councillor Howe speak to those things he wishes to speak to.
Yeah, that's right, perfect.
Welcome back councillor Harryman.
I'll just hide his speech and see how he goes.
Councillor Middle, councillor Middlemiss is stealing other people's homework. Always work from notes. So councillor Clancy has declared a conflict in this one, and he has left the meeting temporarily. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Lund with a high hand, seconded councillor Middlemiss, any opposition? No opposition on this one. Did anyone wish to speak to part six? Nobody?
Oh, well, actually, so I've got it written down here.
Councillor Howe's prepared his notes.
This is a very well-run event and an extremely popular event for our business community. And I think after the, the, the last two years that we've, the businesses have had to go through, I think it's, it's a great idea to support this event and give every business owner a good night out. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howe. Anyone else wish to speak now that we're on a roll? Nope. We don't need to close, but we do need to put it to the vote with a speaker. Councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, that one's carried unanimously. Okay, we'll just get councillor Clancy to rejoin the meeting. One Kingston break, yep. We measure the breaks by the number of biscuits consumed. Sixteen point one, councillors, this is a proposed sale of land, Nine Athely, close to Trelgan, commencing on page two forty-one of the agenda. Councillor Middlemiss is the mover. Do I have a second? Councillor Howe? Do I have any opposition? No opposition, did anyone wish to speak?
Perhaps I should just mention for the record, Madam Mayor, that this is the proposal by an adjoining landowner to buy a narrow strip of land owned by council to incorporate it in his property. The reason why council owned this narrow strip of land is, seems to be lost in the midst of time. It's a very narrow strip, not required by the council, and it's probably not a bad solution for what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Howe, did you want to speak?
I'll just add a little bit, I've popped down, had a good look at the area. It is only a small sliver of land, one hundred and ninety-five square metres, as you can see in the, in the map attachment too. It's a lovely area, it's got a nice green, green area with some trees, it's not going to affect any of that. We still get to keep the ambience of the, of the precinct or area, so very happy to support.
Thank you councillor Howe. Any other councillor wish to speak to this one? We've got no opposition, but we did have speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, that one's carried unanimously. Similar but slightly different, sixteen-two, proposed sale of land, sixty Lafayette Street, Trelgan. Do I have a mover? Councillor Clancy? Second, councillor Howe? Any opposition councillors? Anyone wish to speak? Councillor Clancy?
Just tidying up the old laneways, I think is, is what we're, we're doing here. And this is obviously a very small slither of land as well that's been incorporated into a property that, that exists now. And this is the right thing to do and clean up this very old, probably sits back off the old parish plans from a hundred years ago, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clancy, councillor Howe, anything further on this one? Councillors, any other speakers? We don't have any opposition, we did have speakers, we need to put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Howe and myself, that one's carried unanimously. Third item on this part of the agenda that we moved into is item sixteen-three. This is quarterly budget report from March twenty-twenty-two, commencing, commencing on page two fifty-three of the agenda. Do I have a motion, councillors? Mover, councillor Law is our mover. Second up? Councillor Clancy? Opposition? No opposition. Councillor Law, back to you, did you want to speak? Nope, councillor Clancy, no. Okay councillors, no speakers, no opposition, carrying that one unanimously. Next on the agenda is items of urgent business. I do not believe we have any, Mr CEO, unless something's happened while I wasn't looking. Nothing there. Councillors, we're next move on to meeting closed to the public to consider confidential information on two eighty of your agenda. Do I have a motion to close this out? Councillor Middlemiss, second, councillor Lund, take it, there's no opposition. Nope, we better not have any speakers on this one. On that basis, we'll carry it unanimously, we will close off our meeting. Thank you to the members of the community who've been joining us, thank you to our gallery, the last of our gallery is leaving as we wave, thank you so much. We have online viewers tonight, thank you for those who joined on our live stream, to our speakers, to our public gallery, thank you for attending. It's been a longer meeting than we've had in the past few months. So thank you for staying there with us, and thank you for your patience while we work through some of those governance-related matters. We are now closing out for confidential business, hope to see you at our next meeting, and we wish you all well. Thank you so much, good night.